Yeah.
Oh, this one. Shannon just gave you a guess.
Shannon said these weren't to be read. She said she just received these personally. She wants us to read them, but not to be read into public press.
Oh, okay, okay. I was confused there.
And I did have a few that sent emails to everyone, which is appropriate, but they didn't need it.
I just know that if this was an open meeting, we'd have a bunch of people that would pitchforks on both sides.
And I would be ready for them.
Well, see, I wouldn't because I'm like here and so I'm like the first one to catch the arrows. That's exactly right.
We would have had to have plexiglass up, though.
Luke Daly.
So I picked.
Join the meeting.
I picked this space here. They come to Tarn, Heather.
Hi, Dr. Talk.
Join the meeting.
Can I hear us yet?
I'm sorry.
Can I hear us yet?
Yes.
I've never even been to any of these.
You kind of are.
No, it's okay then.
We need to start putting Red Bulls in.
I like being off. It's always stopped right here and I can see my hand every once in a while.
Yes. Hey, no, they put those. And Red Bull is called Red Star or something.
Join the meeting.
I have neither. It's like cough syrup or something.
Join the meeting.
I'm gonna go walk around right back.
Oh, we've got two minutes. You know, I may make it through my whole tenure without ever having an audience.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yay.
How's your daughter doing? Is she playing basketball?
Uh, you can get Stephanie to send it. She's. I'm sorry.
How's your daughter doing? Is she playing some basketball?
She is.
Fran, is the door locked?
It is locked. Yeah, she's going to play basketball. She's super excited.
Good.
I'm gonna keep my mouth shut.
Maybe I need to go live with YouTube because someone's five.
Okay. Does that one up there have a recall button on it for?
He just texted me about 45 minutes ago. He goes, I thought it was at five. How come it's already started?
Join the meeting.
You there?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, I was gonna see if you could help mayor get locked in to the Zoom meeting. I was gonna see if you can help mayor get locked into the Zoom meeting.
We're obviously providing soft drinks, boss.
Yeah.
Hello, sir. Is this no shave, no Movember, whatever they call it?
It is.
There you go. You know, I find that the big guy has a mask. I told the hair, so no one actually knows if you don't shave the day.
What? David wants mine after the meeting. I thought if we get out less than three hours, he can have it. He can wear it on Thanksgiving Day.
Probably not.
This one, Shannon. This is Mary. It's Focker. Mary Focker.
Does it say Goldsmith, you know?
Yeah.
I just want to put it down. I haven't.
Are you just gonna read that?
Really? Oh, Morgan's my sister-in-law. So. Not by blood, but. Oh, yeah, she's in the best spot.
Oh, wait.
And that used to be her property.
Oh, I know what you're saying.
So that's the really horrible part.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Hi, Joan.
Can you hear me?
Oh, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Hi, Joan, how are you?
Fine, yeah, doing well. Hi, Rick.
Good. How's Scott? He's good.
Alan Grunwald with Urban Engineering.
Join the meeting.
Hi, Joan.
Two fourteen, today's number.
Yeah, so I think we had discussion, but there was a TML notice and the government not officially said there's no second shutdown. So.
Did you see that the nominee put out that Corpus was going to be giving some of the Pfizer vaccine in December?
No, I did not, but I did see they were distributing the. Lam, it's in BAB or whatever.
Ready?
Supposed to keep you out of hospital.
That's already available.
Is it? Okay, awesome.
Is it for first responders? No, the. Talking about, I think it's the one that.
They gave to Trump.
Ready to go?
Yeah. Yeah, but it's what you're talking about.
Is everyone ready?
Yes, Mayor.
They for sure.
It's November 19, 5:00 PM.
The order.
Calling the Capitol Council Regular Meeting.
Well, sure.
And who's doing the opening prayer?
Keith's gonna do the opening prayer.
Where are you gonna pledge?
A pledge.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands.
And to one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Our Father, Creator of the heaven and earth, we know that you are a loving and merciful God. As we enter this, the holiest of all seasons, we thank you for the many blessings that you have provided each of us. Thank you for allowing us to share this day. These leaders and good fortune be part of the Port Aransas community. In this time of uncertainty, division, and escalating chaos, we find comfort knowing that you are with us. We pray that you gather national leaders towards common decency, our state leaders towards common sense, our local leaders towards common ground. Forgive us when we fall short of your expectations. Remind each of us that the one thing we should all have in common, a sense of duty to serve you ahead of ourselves. We ask that you protect those that protect us, both here and abroad. In your name we pray.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, I have a couple. I have one presentation I want to do and I do want to bring you up to date on the COVID count. New Acers County, it's now 214 cases as of today. And it seems to be rising. So it was 172 yesterday, 214 today. I encourage all citizens to take this seriously. Wear a mask, wear protection, wash your hands, just like the. It has, the doctors have told us to do, and we'll try to get through this together. I want to do a presentation to our gas department in recognition of excellence. The City Council would like to congratulate the Port Aransas Gas Department for being recognized for its excellent performance rating for 2020. And for 15 consecutive years of excellent ratings from 2004 to 2019 by the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool. The award stems from the Gas Department's pledge to excel by providing the community with specialized subject matter experts and performing the highest degree of safety in the field. And I want to congratulate our Gas Department for that award. The second thing I wanted to bring your attention to.
Kathy Fulton.
Join the meeting.
Is that the 87th Legislature. There's a bill pending in that legislature that authorizes the Port of Corpus Christi to develop real property it owns inside the boundaries of a municipality in the same way PCCA was authorized to develop the Navy Station at Eagle Side, namely for job creation and retention, economic development, industry and commerce and manufacturing, housing, recreation, and infrastructure installation. It authorizes PCCA to develop a, an authorized project on PCCA's real property in a city, or lease PCCA's real property in a city to another person or an authorized project.
Mayor, we do have this as an agenda item.
Oh, do we?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what item is that?
It's all the way at the N-City Manager Report. It's item Y.
Okay, all right, well, then we'll.
Okay.
Okay. Public hearing. On the following is a final plat. Twenty, twenty-four ninety-four. William R. Ellis subdivision, lot two, lots two, three, and four. Point eight, five, eight, five acres. Being a re.
No, I can do it.
I have to take this. Yes.
When do you want to take over? He's got a answer phone.
Hey, Mike. I can hear, I can hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna start. I'm gonna restart because I kind of lost mayor's track there. Okay, so public hearing, first item A, it's for the final plat for the William R. Ellis subdivision, lot two, lots two, three, and four, which is point eight, five, eight, five acres, being a replat of lots one through 11, block three, the Captain H.M. Teller tract. It's an 11-foot wide strip of land between Captain H.M. Teller tract and lot one, block three, as shown on the map. Made for J.M. Ellis, recorded in volume five, page three, miscellaneous map reference, Odoyes County, Texas. Is there any comments on that particular item?
I'm gonna allow instructions into the council meeting right now.
Okay. Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Hello?
Read all the public hearing items.
I didn't know if they wanted to do it one at a time.
Let's read them all three and then.
They can speak on, yeah.
We go through and pass.
All right, no problem. So B is a final plat, twenty, twenty-five, thirty-four, Cinnamon Shore South, Unit Three, part of Cinnamon Shore Two, PUD. And it's a six-point-one-zero acre, being a replat of lot one, block one, lot 31, block one, lot 33, block one, lots 26, block two, lot 32, block two, lot 22, block five, Cinnamon Shore South, Unit One, part of Cinnamon Shore Two, PUD. And then item C is a final plat, twenty, twenty-five, thirty-five, Rock Cottage's Town Homes, lot one, block one, units one through 28, and lot one, block two, 3.41 acres of land, being a portion of lot six, block 32, all of lot seven, block 32, and a portion of lots four and five, block 37, state land surveys on West End, Odoyes County, Texas.
Let's, let's see if we have comments on those three.
So there's the three items. If there's public comments on any of those three items, praying we can accept those.
You've entered the council meeting. Do you have any comments on the public hearing? All right, it's gonna take me a minute. I had to ask them all to mute. I have to ask them to unmute now.
Can you just unmute one at a time and ask them?
Yes.
Just go through the list, maybe that'd be easier.
Do you have any comments for the public hearing?
No comment.
All right, will you have citizen comments?
I, I have no comment.
Sounds like it.
How many others are there?
There's three or there's four.
Hello, this is Daniel Mazok.
Hi, Daniel, do you have any comments for the public hearing?
Um, not for the public hearing, or the, not for that agenda item, but I have a public comment.
Okay. We'll get to that in just a moment.
Okay, no problem. I'll mute myself.
This Kathy Fulton.
Hi, Kathy.
Yes, I do have public comment, but not necessarily for this.
What's the last four of your phone number?
My number is area code four-three-two, three-eight-six, three-nine-four-five.
Okay, thank you. And the rest of these I've asked to unmute and they have not unmuted, so I don't know if they've got off the phone call or if not.
Okay, why don't we go on to citizen comments and reports? You want me to read the ones that have been submitted first or ask for public, ask for citizen comments from the chat? Okay.
Kathy, are you still there?
Yes.
With your citizen comment?
Yes. I would like to say that on Tuesday, the port held its regular meeting and Sean Strawbridge said at this meeting about this legislative, legislation that they're trying, the port wants to get through. He said specifically, Port Aransas wants this legislation. They are excited about this legislation and are fully supportive of it. This is because Port Aransas did not sign the letter that the 10 other mayors signed. I would like to know if this statement that Sean Strawbridge made is true and if, if leaders are supporting this legislation by the port, which would basically nullify the bogus settlement agreement that was signed because it will completely take away any oversight of any code. It's, it's extremely frightening and very disappointing to think that we have people going behind our backs either telling Strawbridge that they're not. And if this wasn't said to Sean Strawbridge, then I think the city needs to rebut this by letting the port know that they're putting words in the city's mouth. This should outrage the city if this wasn't made by, this statement wasn't made by a city official. And I would like to know if it was done by a city official, who said it? And I would also like to go on record as saying laughing rock, laughing horse, whatever's going in over there. They didn't even try to cut down the sizes or remember anything about Old Town. Thank you.
Kathy.
This is Daniel. Is this the time for a citizen comment?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay. So I'd just like to briefly comment on the recent enforcement of the International Property Management Code. So I understand the codes on the books and y'all have obligations to enforce, you know, your codes of record and everything like that. But the sudden enforcement of this has been particularly disruptive to existing construction projects, projects that have all already been authorized for design or in progress for some time. And I'd like to, you know, urge council and the city management to consider like a 12- to 18-month grace period be considered before enforcing some of those standards. And then during that time, would like to encourage that, you know, conversations be had with citizens and other stakeholders, builders, architects, and, you know, invested parties in both the community of Port Aransas and those impacted by these unit sizes with, you know, cost of construction. You know, and Port Aransas is fairly high and every additional square foot can, or say 50 square foot for an additional occupant can be pretty expensive, $10,000 plus. You know, a lot of people love coming to Port Aransas to vacation. Friends, families come down and stay and enjoy the properties. And I don't think an additional 50 square foot or 100 square foot in some of these bunk rooms is going to make a bit of difference to their stay, except to make it more expensive and make ownership in Port Aransas more expensive. So I appreciate your time, mayor and council, and that's my public comment. And I'll also be on to answer any questions regarding the PUD item and, or the zoning item. I'm sorry, I'm planning item, and discuss hotel and conference center. So I'll stay on and mute. Thank you.
We have Joe Krueger coming in. Can you have a comment? Hi, Joe. Hi, Joe Ellen. If you want to maybe read a comment right now until she gets connected. Or my other citizen.
The first one on this list is basically what Daniel just, you know, basically spoke. So I don't think I need to reread what he just said, so.
I think there's 10 of them, aren't there?
Yeah. Well, no, that Daniel, Daniel Mazok sent in a public comment and basically he just restated that. Now, there is a separate letter that was written, but that was not his separate public comment. So I'm not going to reread Daniel's. There is a letter that has been sent multiple times, I think maybe 10 at least. It was signed by multiple parties and then it was sent by individuals. So I will read that. Dear City Port Aransas officials, the city's recent enforcement of the International Property Maintenance Code 2015 Edition has brought about severe unrest to the community of Port Aransas. This has impacted many homes already under construction, seeking a certificate of occupancy, homes presently being submitted for permit, and homes presently in design by various architects and developers. Through its enforcement, it has also caused extensive financial harm and time delays to builders, architects, and lot and homeowners alike. And in that time, will do the same to owners of thousands of homes and properties around Port Aransas. Section 404.4.1 appears to be the largest car, cause of concern to the city of Port Aransas. However, there are several sections regarding accessing rooms off of other rooms and locating beds off of halls or under stairs that also may impact many Port Aransas homes, which will be discussed later. This is the section from the code, 404.4.1, room area. Every living room shall contain not less than 120 square feet and every room shall not contain less than 70 square feet and every bedroom occupied by more than one person shall contain not less than 50 square feet of floor area for each occupant thereof. Before we consider the ramifications this has to owning property in Port Aransas, a town supported by tourism, most largely by Texas families, I believe it's valuable to first understand why the International Property Maintenance Code exists and its mission. The International Property Maintenance Code is founded on principles that the IPMC must. One, adequately protect public health, safety, and welfare. Two, not unnecessarily increase construction costs. Three, not restrict the use of new materials, productions, or methods of construction. And four, not give preferential treatment to particular types or classes of materials, products, or methods of construction. Outside of occupancy, the IMPC, excuse me, IPMC spends significant time outlining standards for fire, safety, egress, and ventilation. It even discusses the minimum number of placement of light fixtures to adequately light a space and minimum ceiling heights. Below are some of the excerpts. How the adequately ceiling height can affect physical well-being. How in overcrowded living conditions, privacy is lost and mental health is affected. Chapter four, which also discusses occupancy limits in addition to light and ventilation standards, spends time discussing the fundamental psychological and psychological needs of occupants, including.
Luke Daly.
Privacy for the.
Join the meeting.
Facilities that make possible for the performance of household tasks with undue physical and mental fatigue. Adequate space and sufficient ceiling heights reduce physical and mental fatigue. Section 404.4.1, the same section regarding square feet required by per occupant, goes on in the inspector's commentary to discuss how inadequate sleeping space reduces privacy and provides insufficient space for clothes, furniture, and personal belongings. It appears evident that the IPMC seeks to protect the well-being of occupants, particularly in permanent occupant situations. What isn't discussed or defined anywhere in the text are terms like bunk, short-term, or vacation. Broadly, people are not living in bunk rooms full-time. And if they are, it is reasonable for them to simply remove excess bunks or have fewer occupancies share that space long-term. Bunks and bunk rooms provide excellent space for your children's friends to stay the night. Your college student can invite his closest friends to come home to the beach for the weekend or even extra space for a couple or two to come stay for a few nights. The problem with this code is it does not create any distinction between regular bedroom and a bunk room or permanent living quarters versus transient living quarters. City Port Aransas short-term rental ordinance hits the occupancy to two adults per sleeping room plus an additional four per dwelling unit, unless otherwise allowed by building official. Children under the age of 12 are not counted in the occupancy calculation. Texas Property Code, section 92.010, on the occupancy limits establishes the maximum number of adults that a landlord may allow to occupy dwell. number of adults that a landlord may allow to occupy a dwelling is three times the number of bedrooms in the dwelling, and an adult is considered an individual of 18 years of older. The IPMC does not define, distinguish between adults and children in its discussion of occupants in the way the state and city ordinances on occupancy do. The City of Port Aransas appears to have a desire to use this code retroactively to address perceived overcrowding throughout town. While this appears within their municipal rights, the question remains, was this the intent of IM, IPMC, and should it be enforced as is, or is there another alternative solution? With hundreds of projects and millions of dollars already sunk into projects in design and under construction, and billions of dollars of existing homes which could be impacted by this ruling, it seems important to take a beat and decide what's best for the town and the property owners. The solution may be to provide an 18-month grace period before enforcing occupancy and sleeping provisions to the IPMC. This would allow for time to existing projects and planning to obtain building permits without requiring a complete redesign, and homes nearing completion would not require that bunks be torn out or modified to comply. This would also give time for the city to select a committee to evaluate the impacts of enforcing this provision on new and existing homes. How many existing homes are there out there that would require the removal of multiple beds? With climbing construction costs, lumber shortages, increased permitting costs, and appreciating land values, homeownership in Port Aransas is more expensive than ever, and the cost of an additional 50 square feet is easily $10,000. The Chamber of Commerce data suggests that over 5 million people visit Port Aransas each year. What's the impact to the tax base, the restaurants, the businesses, the town if it sees a 25% cut to that number? Do Port A citizens and officials feel the occupancy standards set by the IPMC are better than the ones that have already had been on the books regarding short-term rentals? Is there a better solution? We believe there is, and it's worth taking the time to establish what it is. Kindest regards, a collection of Port Aransas property owners, residents, builders, architects, and business owners. So that was submitted by Banda Mazok originally, and then it was also resubmitted by Cara Burgess of Port Aransas. Also submitted by Zach Toriki, Port Aransas. Also submitted by Jed Toriki of Port Aransas. Also submitted by Jody JRS Newport. This is a separate letter. Good afternoon, Francesca. I would like to, this letter to be read as public comment in today's council meeting. Dear City Council members, the recent news that the city intends to retroactively enforce chosen sections of the IRC in the local short-term rental ordinance is concerning. I own and personally manage several short-term rental homes in Port Aransas and would like the city to consider a timeline and enforcement practices of the recent proposals. A delay in the enforcement of the short-term rental and IRC codes would allow ample time for comment and discussion, and hopefully a more thoughtful approach to these issues. We are full-time residents, and as such, we care deeply about keeping Port Aransas residents and guests safe, and would like the opportunity to discuss further as your time allows. Thank you for your consideration. Regards, Mike Dayon. Okay, this is a new letter from Carrie Robb. I hope I said that right. Port Aransas officials, I have a short-term rental property in Port Aransas. I'm very concerned with the recent enforcement. I would encourage city officials to table the enforcement for 18 months, which would allow time to further resource the ramifications of the IPMC bunk issue. Thank you for your consideration. Regards, Carrie Robb. She also submitted the same letter that I read. An additional letter from Marty Walker. To whom it may concern, as a property owner, I found these major issues in enforcement to be cumbersome and feel it should be put to a vote for all property owners to decide how Port Aransas is shaped. I think the current ideas put forth are draconian and not in the best interest of the community. Thanks, Marty Walker. Also submitted the same letter. This is Garrett Brunson also submitted the same letter.
I came here and worked the shame. So they all have to repeat all that.
And those were all that was in that packet. Why don't we take a five-minute recess? Wouldn't take a five-minute recess?
Five-minute recess, everyone. We got to figure out some IT issues.
Yeah, sorry. We have some technical difficulties.
Hey, is it, is it y'all that's freezing up, or is it me?
I don't know. We're having technical, we're having technical issues. We don't know what the problem is.
Are we freezing up on you, Beth?
Yes.
You are freezing up on me.
Same thing. Where's Joan?
Yeah, I sent Joan to Texas, see if it was freezing up on her bed.
I don't see you all at all, so.
So Joan, have you, can you hear us?
Yes, I hear just fine.
Have you been hearing the last stuff that Wendy's been reading?
Yes, I heard it all.
Okay.
I did too.
Hear anything?
I'm going to try to hop on in this, they, in this hotel, they had two options. I think I picked one.
Beth, are you able to hear what I said? That the, that the audio, that the vision was frozen?
Yell at.
Wendy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you can hear me.
I'm half hearing you.
Yeah, we can hear you, Fran.
Okay. Okay. That says, you can leave it unmute and then.
Did you hear a problem?
Go through all that again.
Mayor, she just read the real long letter.
The real what?
The, the long letter that 10 people sent in. It's a, it's that long duplicate letter.
About the IPMC?
Yes, sir.
You read all of them.
Okay.
I read, Mayor, I read the 34 pages of citizen comments that Fran sent us in the email. I read all of that.
Okay, how about citizen comments now?
We've had one, and as soon as Fran gets back, we'll invite those others to speak.
Okay. Good show.
Got a copy of the IPMC code?
Yeah, we'll get it to you.
Okay, where are we at?
We do have Luke Daley.
Yeah, let's get, let's get citizen comments on.
Mayor, are you still there?
I'm still here. This stuff is for the birds.
Hey there.
Luke, how are you?
Fine. I'm frustrated, but it's not you, it's technology.
Okay, where are we at?
Go ahead and present your citizen comment. You have three minutes.
Yeah, let's get, let's get citizen comments on.
I don't think she hears you.
It's Dewayne.
I think it's probably Luke's or somebody that has
Yeah, it's, it's Luke. I gotta get away from the, the computer. Tell me when to start.
No.
All right, ahead.
Okay. All right. I sent an email to the city, and this is what it goes like. Dear Mayor Bouillon and Port Aransas City Council members, it is my understanding that there is one position open on the Planning and Zoning Commission left vacant by a recent resignation. I know of several other citizens who attempted to serve but could not continue, frustrated by that board's direction and conduct. Many residents feel the same, that our concerns are not being heard, and our neighborhoods are being degraded by the proliferation of densely packed, short-term rental developments. These higher-density subdivisions were originally proposed under the guise of providing more affordable housing for the local workforce. They have obviously not done this, but only added to problems with traffic, parking, noise, and congestion. It is time to reevaluate these other development schemes as they are not doing what they were intended. Requests for review of the long-term master plan adherence to Vision Port Aransas and honoring the Old Town Resolution have been ignored, rebuffed, and flatly refused. However, it seems the city charter states that the master plan is to be reviewed every five years. Until this is done, there should be a moratorium on accepting new applications for higher-density subdivisions allowing short-term rentals, especially in Old Town. The recent stampede of proposals, the last-minute submittals for, the last-minute submittals for review, 500, 400, 500 pages at 5 o'clock on a Friday afternoon when Planning and Zoning meets on Tuesday, and the many, the many violations of city code found within indicate this need for a moratorium. Because of the coronavirus, public access to city resources and meetings is unwise and difficult, if not impossible. Do not take this as a lack of interest or approval of recent decisions. There is growing resentment of real and apparent conflicts of interest on the part of some of those elected, selected, and hired to direct projects here. Hopefully, you will seriously consider this as you make this appointment for planning and zoning. Please choose community members without a vested interest in these projects and those whose employment or livelihood will not hamper their decisions. Please, no more developers, their employees, or those whose employment could be affected by those with projects before the planning commission. If there are no candidates that fit that criteria, we suggest you table that decision and reopen the application process. This is signed by 72 people. Luke and Willie Daley, Pat, Eve, and Katie Koklenberg, Jill and Roger Brodnax, Alaska and Perry Dutton, Kristi and Frank Goldston, Arnold and Diane Gavella, Carol Kilgore, Nancy Kilgore, Pam and John Cle, Doug and Rebel Langford, Tim and Liz Lockwood, Danny and Janine LaBrusso, Charlene and Dennis McMillian, Toots and Janice Moore, John and Donata Morris, Tina and Bob Newman, Les and Brenda Porter, Ed and Rita Reed, Rick and Lily Richardson, Stephanie Sawyer, Drake Sawyer, Jimmy and Donna Schaefer, Sue Shermer and Leo Kotu, Tim and Mary, Jim and Marie Smallwood, Amy and Dave Sullivan, Sherry and Ned Teller, Dan and Betty Ulich, Dr. Ron Thomas, Brenda Barnett, Wavel Brown, Julie Finley, Paul Flynn, Nancy Hyder, Teresa James, Bob Kinsel Jr., Wayne Kite, Mallory Colaja, Dorothy Lindner, Christina Milligan, Rita Pearson, Suzie Pina, Susan Legadost Powell, DeeDee Smith, Bobby White, Kelly Heron, Edette Sullivan, and Danny and Barry Sullivan. So each member of you have gotten this, and you need to understand, this relates to things on this, on this agenda today, especially rock cottages. It's just, we went through that, we found so many mistakes, errors, omissions, and we think a lot of them were intentional. We're tired of being run over by those who want to just run our city for their own profit. So please consider this and choose carefully when you put people on planning and zoning because that is why we are where we are now. And people are very upset. These 72 people all signed up within the last 48 hours. So I think you can see, this is not just a few same old people. Thank you. And my own concern about rock cottages is wrong, it's the wrong project in the wrong place. There's plenty of other, plenty of other developments going on, there's plenty of places for second homes, and we have so many people in Port Aransas, they're getting pushed out of their first homes. People that have to rent, and I am so glad that you're doing the, the affordable housing or the workforce housing out the road. I'm so glad, but it's already, there's people that have to leave by March, and I don't think that's going to be ready by then. So you gotta stop letting the second home, short-term rentals, just run our city into the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke.
Can we comment on that?
No.
No, sir. But that's all the citizen comments that we've had that called in.
Kruger back on?
She didn't, she has no comments.
Okay.
What's next, Francesca?
It's going to be your executive session.
Executive session, item seven, Mayor.
I'm on it. The city council will conduct a closed executive session in compliance with Section 551072 to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, and value of real property interest for property located at 113 Alistair Street, Port Aransas, Texas, 78373, Morgan, Morgan's Edition lots through 10, block two, and a portion of lots five and six, block one. We're now on executive session. 5:42.
All right, we're going to log off here and go into executive session.
Charles, are you going to come down here, or are you going to stay in there?
Yeah.
Do you want to come down here for executive session, so maybe you can grab Mike a little better?
Not with 214 cases today, I'm not coming down there, no.
Actually, it's going to be Mark McClain.
He should be able to hear to give me just a second. Might get him out of the way.
I'll switch places.
Yeah. Right. Well, better, you can sit in the chair.
Hey, Mike.
It's recording.
I'm going to, for this particular agenda item, what did we have Mike on for?
I'm not needed for this one.
Yeah, because I was going to dial in Mark McClain.
No, I wouldn't be there. I thought it was just the PFC.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Ready, Fran?
We just had a moment. Sorry, it's loading for the YouTube right now.
Oh, they're back.
Who said that?
I'm not 100% sure. Maybe Daniel may have.
Daniel or Ben, yeah. All right, that was me. I've been, I've been wondering when the video might pop back up. All right, I'll mute myself, guys. Welcome back.
Money in creating Are we ready, Fran?
We're ready.
Okay, Mayor, you can go ahead and bring us out of executive session and three-minute restroom break.
All right, we're going to come out of executive session. It's 6:26 PM, 11:19. We'll come out of executive session now and we'll have a three-minute break.
Yeah, and there's no action.
No action taken on that.
All right, three-minute break.
You ready, Mike?
We ready?
Item nine.
Item eight.
We have to come out, did, did we come out?
Well, we came out in the open session.
And no action is going to be
Yeah, no action.
Okay. Item nine, considers agenda. Appears that the city council meetings for October 20, September 3, September 10, September 17, and October 15 need to be approved.
An ordinance E, sir.
An ordinance E. There's a second reading amended the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23, Article 3, traffic regulations on specific streets. three, traffic regulations on specific streets. By adding new Division Six, Section twenty-three ninety-six, enforcement of traffic laws and private subdivisions and/or private roads to allow for Port Aransas Police Department to enforce traffic regulations in private subdivision and on private roads, providing for an effective date reading, publication, and service.
Motion to approve consent agenda as.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, call row.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Salamine?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Tim Moore?
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
I think Mary.
Okay, item number ten, Consideration, is a resolution, F is resolution, except approving the annual financial report for the year ending September thirty, two thousand nineteen, as presented by buyer and company-certified public accountants and directing publications as required by the Home Rule Charter.
Give me just a moment here.
We're looking for Darla.
Is this the one we always have the gentleman in the bowtie coming in and telling us?
Yes.
And telling us how we don't have enough money in the retirement accounts or something?
Well, we usually make a mistake or somewhere, and let me see.
I read through about, actually, I made it through about a third of the way here and then finally just the sheer boredom, like.
Excitement.
Killed me, and so I couldn't do it anymore. But yes, I did actually read about a third of that.
You wouldn't be a very good banker.
No, I wouldn't.
Okay, I probably wouldn't be very good at trying to sell soon.
I always expect Winnie will read every bit of it and know whether it's right or wrong.
All right, Darla is logging in.
Good evening. Am I next?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But we need Darla first.
Okay.
Darla's joining right now.
So let Darla kick it off, and then she'll introduce Wayne. So Darla, we'll let you do the kickoff. Darla?
Yes, I just got on, I'm sorry.
So we're ready for you, Wayne's on, and we'll let you do the kickoff.
Okay. We have our audit for the year ending nine-thirty of two thousand nineteen, and we have Wayne Bayer here to do the presentation and a brief presentation. If you have any questions, we can address those after.
Wayne, it's all yours.
Did you say a brief presentation, Darla? Is that what you said?
I did say a presentation.
I can do that. Okay, I guess, does everybody have a copy of the audit report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you turn to page one and two of the report, this is our opinion letter, and this is a unmodified opinion, it's the highest form of opinion that can be given for an audited entity. If you look at page one where it says auditing responsibility, and that second sentence says, "We conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and the standards applicable to financial audits contain the government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States." So we had two different sets of standards that we had to follow when performing this audit. The first set of standards is just the regular audit, and that second set of standards was for the single audit, which we'll look at in a second. And so these standards, these are rules and procedures that all auditing firms must follow the same rules. So it's a good clean, high-qualified opinion. I just want to point out quickly, from pages three through page number twelve, is what we call an MVNA, it's an additional discussion or analysis on the city's finances. I'm not going to say anything about it other than the fact that Darla did it, and we've got nice color, nice color graphs and things, if you want to look at that. I'd like to ask you if you would, turn over to page number seventeen of the report. Page seventeen is kind of a bird's-eye view of all the governmental funds combined, other than your proprietary funds. The main one is that first column is a general fund. You can see that it had, if you looked down there, about six, seven lines up, had excess of revenues, expenditures of one-point-five million dollars. Go to the very bottom of that first column, you have ending fund balance of ten million six forty-six, that's made up of four-point-three million dollars of that community's disaster loan monies. The second column is your beach cleaning funds, at the end of the year, you had two-point-five million there. Hotel motel facility funds, that third column at the bottom, you had six-point-seven million dollars at the year's end. The hurricane recovery fund, it had a minus one-point-three million dollars, but it'll be made up by future proceeds of grants. The construction fund, if you're looking at fifth column, you've got two lines up, you have a beginning balance of six million dollars at the beginning of the year, that'd be as of October first, two thousand eighteen. At the end of the year, you have three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars remaining, and that was a construction going on with both the gas fund and harbor fund. And those assets are set up into those funds. Quickly, if you turn over to page nineteen of the report, it's kind of more of a detailed presentation of the general fund. The first column is the budget as adopted, that second column is the final amended budget. The third column are your actual income and expense numbers, and that last column is your budget variance column. And simply put, if it has brackets around it in the budget variance column, it's an unfavorable variance. If you don't have brackets, it's a favorable variance. So overall, in your expenditures, if you look at your total expenditures, you had budgeted, your minute budget was ten million eight-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, you spent nine-point-four-five million dollars.
Lisa Shelton.
So you came in at.
Join the meeting.
One-point-three million dollars. Okay.
Stephen Grunwald with Urban Engineering.
Join the meeting.
If you would, just turn over to page twenty-two and twenty-three of the report. This is your enterprise funds, you give your gas sanitation harbor fund. If you look at page, you notice there's seven columns on either page. Page twenty-two are your assets, and page twenty-three are your liabilities and equity. If you look at page twenty-three, in that very first column, that's what your gas fund, that's your gas fund equity and liabilities at the end of the year. The second column is your gas fund for the previous year, and then so on and so forth for your sanitation fund and your harbor fund. But if you look at that first column, two lines from the bottom in that gas fund, you see it's your unrestricted amount was three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars. Last year was three-hundred-and-one thousand dollars, so it increased by about sixty-five thousand dollars. Go to that third column in your sanitation fund, your unrestricted equity was thirteen thousand dollars, almost fourteen thousand dollars. The prior year was three thirty-two-hundred dollars in the red, so it increased from in the red to the black. And then that fifth column, your harbor fund, you had unreserved equity of six-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. At the end of the year, you started a year out with six-hundred-and-six thousand dollars. So you progressed in all three of those funds. If you turn over to page twenty-four, is your income statement. Again, there are seven columns, and again, for the gas fund, that first column's a current year, the second column would be the prior year, so you can kind of compare both years. Same goes for the sanitation and harbor fund. If you go right in the middle of the page there, where it says operating income loss, that's basically the tail of the tape, that's what you want to look at, is to see how your funds did. So that first column there, your gas fund, for the year you lost nineteen thousand four twenty-one, that's up from a loss of two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand sixty-five dollars in the prior year. And then that third column, your sanitation fund, you had a gain of forty-three thousand five seventy-eight, and that's up by about a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars from a loss of eighty-one thousand in the prior year. And then your fifth column, your harbor fund, you had a loss last year of two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars, and that's up from a loss of four-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand for the prior year. So it kind of looks like these funds have good reserves to begin with, actually, but it looks like, you know, you're kind of climbing back out of the hurricane thing, getting back on your feet for these funds. Okay, a couple of other things, I want to show you the debt, if I could. That would be on page number forty-nine at the top, is your debt. And we're required to put this schedule in the reports. You have all different kinds of debt, some of them are debt that you have decided to be debt, some are other things that are required to put into the schedule. And if you go over to your, let's see, one, two, three, your sixth column, I think, where it says ending balance, those are your ending balances for all your different kinds of debt. At the very top are your bonds, you have an ending amount of seventeen thousand, seventeen million nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. You have capital lease purchases, you had two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollar ending balance, and you had to put that community's disaster loan monies in at four-point-three million dollars. It may eventually be forgiven, those are usually forgiven, so, but as of right now, it's in that schedule. You have, it's called OPEB liability, of two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, that's for your other post-employee benefits, that'd be like for people retiring from the city and still receiving some sort of benefit from the city. And then you have, it's called net pension liability. What that is, is that's your TMRS plan, you can see it both up above in your governmental activities and then below in your business-type activities, your gas, sanitation, harbor, and that's your TMRS plan, that's the amount by which your life, most out of that plan are more than what you actually have in that plan. So, and then you have, lastly, your compensated absences of two-hundred-and-sixty-five, those are your unpaid vacation pay at the end of the year. I will say, if you notice that you're not, your net pension liability, you notice it increased by quite a bit last year. You had beginning balances, these for the governmental activities, of two-point-three million dollars, it actually increased by a million dollars, it was three-point-four million dollars at the end of the year. And what happened really is that these plans, both this plan and also the one for the colonies of TDHRS, or whatever it's called, TCDRS, they actually lost money on their investments last year, so it's affected a lot of these plans. If you're interested at all, you can go to page fifty-five, and in that first column, or two thousand eighteen column, kind of tells you how you derived the net pension liability. It's in the middle of the page there, you had total pension liability of sixteen million dollars. You had fiduciary net position of twelve million six-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars, and that's you with a liability of thirty-seven, three million seven-eighty-seven thousand dollars. If you go down one more line, you were at that date seventy-six-point-nine-nine percent funded. The previous years, just go right to the right of that, prior year is eighty-three-point-twenty-two percent funded, so I would say probably your average percentage, these are, rarely are these things a hundred percent funded, the average is probably around eighty-five percent funded. And then, a couple other things here, if you go toward the back of the report, back to page number eighty, sorry, ninety, ninety-one, these are your other governmental funds that were not up in the front, and just all various types of funds that you have. Like, for instance, that second column on page ninety is your airport fund, kind of see how you did there. You had a loss of twenty-nine hundred dollars for the years, this actually has done better than most airport funds I see. And most airport funds, they have to transfer monies in from the general fund to keep it in operation. Anyhow, these are the other funds. And then, just lastly, if you go to page number in the report, page one oh three, is the grants, the big one there would be the FEMA grant, these are expenditures that have been paid, I can't remember the name of that fund number, it's Hurricane Fund, whichever number that is, and these are expenditures that are paid out of that fund. So this, those are the grants, and they're over. The requirement for a single audit is the expenditure, these are expenditures that exceed seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, then it's a single audit. The very, very last page, one-ten, there was just one write-up, and since this is a single audit, the write-up is not a separate piece of paper, but it's rather attached to the report. If you look at the top, the Marlin Academy condition, we noted in our test level of the twenty-six accounts were billed incorrectly, so we just recommend that some kind of system.
Alex Harris.
I'm sorry?
Join the meeting.
Oh, keep going, Wayne, we just had someone join our meeting.
Oh, okay. So anyhow, that's basically the only comment that we found. And that's all I have, unless there are any questions.
Darla, do you have anything else needed to add?
No, Will stayed on the Marlin Academy, though. That was being looked at for, we talked about this when we did the fee schedule last time, the previous director, they were, they had a system on their own where they were evaluating based on need, and that's how they were charging. And we have since solidified that plan and are charging everybody the same with the same But if anyone else has any other questions, we'd be happy to address.
Thank you, Wayne, thank you, Darla.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you. Have a good evening and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Do we need to approve it? Darla, what kind of approval do we need?
Yes, we'd usually just do an acceptance, so to accept it, the audit.
Motion, so just a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept and approve the annual financial report as stated.
Second. Call the row.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Mayor Tim Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salamine?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Mary.
Yes. Item G is a resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for a hotel conference center with the Inn Spa and Conference Center LP designating the hotel subject to this agreement and amendment as a hotel that is part of a qualified project to which Chapter C of Chapter three fifty-one of the Texas Tax Code applies, extending said agreement for an additional two-years term ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing the city manager to sign all documents associated with said agreement.
Okay, so as you guys know, this was all. Okay, so as you, as you guys know, this was on the October agenda. And one of the concerns, um, that was kind of echoed through the, the members, the council members was, you know, hey, this seems just like a big push down the road, and we would like to see some, some timelines with some dates in there of some, um, you know, some, some, you know, however you phrase it, but some, some milestones met. So the, the proposal that came back, so they, they, from Mr. Lampkin and Devon Baka, Baka from the, uh, from the Cinnamon Shores Group, um, it, it's in your packet. Uh, so there's four, four dates in there that they proposed.
Actually, isn't there five?
Oh, excuse me, there's five, yeah, there's five. Um, the first being closing on the land, whi- which would be in three months. Um, number two would be complete land planning and have submitted for the PUD amendment, if there is any PUD amendment required, by August of twenty-one. Complete infrastructure design by December of twenty-one. Complete hotel plans by December of thirty-one also, that's the same date. And then groundbreaking December of twenty-two. So I, I have spoke with a couple of you on it, and, um, maybe some of those dates could be pushed up. Um, in speaking with the, the developer, uh, the biggest issue right now is the impact COVID is having, and, and we need to discuss that, but, uh, because some of you might have a better feel for it than I do, but the impacting, the impact that COVID is having on baking, lending for this type of project, you know, is, is Port A a little bit different, probably, uh, in the, in the lending world? I, I don't know, maybe you guys can weigh in on that, and you guys can weigh in on what you feel of this, of this timeline. I, I think the, um, I think definitely if they complete the conceptual plans within a, which is from a year, I don't know why they would need a full year to break ground. That was one, one question I had. You know, why? If they had completed conceptual plans, I guess you still need to get to a hundred percent documents to go out to bid. And then you got to bid it, award it, you know, then you could break ground. But, you know, do, do they, you know, you guys could look at these and tell me your opinion on what you think of, of this time structure.
Well, just in, in the scheme of things, comparing it to, say, the, um, the people who were doing the affordable housing or apartment deal, they're really on the ball. And what was it from basically submitting plans to them pouring a foundation or, or doing groundwork?
We started getting preliminary plans, um, probably late, late twenty-nineteen, we started getting, you know, we had a pretty decent set of plans. So when the new year rolled around, by spring, those plans were, were really, they, they weren't at a hundred percent, but they were really close. We were, that's when we were waiting on funding. And then, uh, once we got the funding in May and we got the dirt, I mean, those plans are at a hundred percent, and they, they broke ground in
June or July or something, yeah.
July, yeah, so I mean, they were on the ball, they, they were moving.
Nine months, I mean, because he's asking, he's asking for twelve, so that sounds like a nine-month deal, so that doesn't sound unrealistic, except you're giving him an extra three months, is that fair?
This is Daniel here, so a part of the timeline there, uh, the time required to actually create the building pad site. So since we're starting with raw land and the land is presently unplatted, it has no sewer utilities. Um, it does have water access available, but that has to be brought to the project site. So part of that lead time before breaking ground on the hotel and conference center facility is there in place to allow creation of the infrastructure and street system to actually get to the, the pad site. Since it's not located right up on the highway, new streets and utilities will have to be extended to get into the project site so that that property can be constructed, uh, up against that marina. And a lot of that includes some things that haven't been built, uh, out in Port A, or at least to this scale in a while, like bulkhead infrastructure and dredging, um, as part of that.
Hey, Daniel, real quick, let me ask you a question. So, so like item, the, the one item is complete infrastructure design and be ready to contract for construction to start December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one. So that's in a year.
Which, um, so I'm looking at the, the item, but I maybe missed where it states that.
It's the, um,
Are you looking at the agenda, or do you actually have a copy of the, uh, actual agreement?
Okay, so, okay, I'm looking at, at what's on the, on your screen right now. And before, we were looking at the letter that was submitted prior to the, the council meeting. So the, the dates that are in the section under background information there, as stated, were dates that Jeff had tentatively put together to suggest, uh, like prior to the council meeting with staff to see if these dates seem to kind of meet the desires of, of staff and council in terms of milestones. And then the ones in the letter, I synchronized up with city council agenda times, um, to provide updates and update the status as to where we should be as of those council meeting dates. So the dates in the, um, in the letter submitted, uh, that you were on prior to this, or, or the dates were proposing for this. They should be similar, though.
Yeah, I mean.
No, well, here's my question, it says December sixteenth, and I'm looking at your letter. It says, "By this date, infrastructure design should be substantially completed and ready to award for construction." Right, that's December sixteenth. But then it says, right, so then it says commencing January of, so, so you're thinking of, once you hit that December sixteenth date, you're thinking of putting it out to bid and breaking ground January of twenty-two, correct?
Right, so I'm anticipating breaking ground January of twenty-two on the infrastructure and, like, building a, a lift station, installing deep sewer lines to bring, you know, all, all of that portion of it. And that'll be taking place, the bid and negotiate portion can take place before that December sixteenth date or concurrent to it. That's just the date by which I plan to provide, like, an update, but the milestone or goal there is to break ground in January of twenty-two.
So my point is, is on the city's lead-in sheet, it says groundbreaking December twenty-two, which technically, the groundbreaking is occurring twelve months ahead of that.
Yeah.
That might be grand, groundbreaking for the hotel project itself, but.
Correct, that's groundbreaking for the hotel project is at the end of twenty-two, but the, uh, the groundbreaking for the infrastructure and creating that building site takes place almost a year in advance of that.
Yeah, which is only a year from now, so to me, that's not, that's not too bad.
No, that's not, I mean, and I realize that, he's right, there's a lot of stuff they gotta do background-wise, lift station, sewer, water.
Yeah, so I mean, that's.
I mean, you'll be seeing us almost, you know, every couple of months, we'll have agenda items leading into this. And staff will be reviewing plan sets for architectural, you know, PUD amendment as required. So there's, there's a lot of steps along the way that are not shown in this milestone, um, kind of progress update report here.
I, I think what, what we're worried about is just like, hey, it's not the right time, it's not the right time, and keep kicking the can down the road. And, and, you know, eventually, we're gonna say, it, it's, it's, you know, do something or, or.
Can't say what I was gonna say.
Right, so for it, for like a progress update on what's happened since the last meeting, we're very close to closing this loan. We're planning to do so in, or well, I say closing, so we've secured financing, not on the construction of the hotel project yet, but on the purchase of the land, uh, I received a completed ALFA survey in like the last forty-eight hours. That's been shared with the lender and the seller, we're, so we're working to close that property, um, like at the beginning of December. And, um, in addition to that, we've been discussing with the engineers, you know, we went out and reviewed, uh, other marina-type sites, bulkhead design, discussed, you know, how the water levels play into everything. So there's been a lot of discussion on, you know, what elevation to build a, a hotel of this size, and, you know, how high above base flood do we recommend being for, you know, financing and it, uh, insurance, you know, rates and all kinds of things like that to protect, uh, this long-term investment in property as a asset to the community. So we've been planning very hard on how to make the space around that hotel and conference center really desirable, get it, you know, close to the water, but at the same time, uh, make sure that we're able to, to build at the desired elevations. Because when you go to build a hotel at, say, elevation twelve and water level is down at elevation two, you have to figure out how to stack all of those things and bring people down to the water and make that space enjoyable and usable. So there's a lot of design considerations that go into planning the project, and we're actively working through those so that we can complete.
Sure, Daniel, can I get just a clarification on this groundbreaking December third first? That is groundbreaking for the hotel?
Yes.
Okay. Are you, are you okay with the timeline? I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All the row.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Soline?
Yes.
Can I have one more?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
One more, I just have a comment, or just a question, I mean, it's all good, it shouldn't change anything. I'm just, so, I know they were talking about changes in plans, elevations and things like that, and there were some preliminary numbers that we had estimated cost, we thought the project would cost. Daniel, do we look like it's still gonna be in those guidelines, uh, in those estimates? Or do we think that with some of the reevaluation of the assessments of cost, will the, will the project end up costing a lot more than what we originally thought in the beginning? I know materials and everything else is going up, and I know you guys don't have a set number on anything, I'm just seeing what you, what's, what's going on in the thinking.
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump that.
No, you're good.
Sorry, forgot I muted myself. So at a high level, we're still trying to keep the, the project within budget and, um, within those preliminary numbers shared earlier. We're looking for opportunities for, you know, savings where available. Uh, you know, we absolutely want to design, uh, a worthy project within the community. When we had come in last time and talked about, you know, rightsizing the project, or if there was any consideration council would give to, um, you know, reviewing that hundred and seventy-five room number, uh, there was a little bit of, you know, pushback to that. We're absolutely willing to, to do that one seventy-five if that's what it comes to. But, you know, with COVID and everything that's happening, we wanted to consider the council, you know, maybe put together a smaller group of people to, uh, study or discuss whether one twenty-five, one forty, or some other number, uh, feels appropriate for the community and scale it down just a tad to make pushing through financing and things easier. But if the desire of councils to proceed as with the agreement, then we're absolutely able to do that. We don't want to have to start over at square one. But, um, we are interested in rightsizing the project and making sure that we can complete it within the tentative budget.
Thank you.
Okay. You guys are.
Yeah, very voted.
Yeah, item H, mayor.
Dune permit application BSDP twenty-eighteen eighty-eight for the construction of a single-family habitable structure with amenities as submitted by Mustang Island Construction LLC. Richard K. for property location two-five-eight Royal Dunes is consistent with the city's coastal management plan. Rick?
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor, council. So this is, uh, in the Mustang Oil N U D, uh, is the address, uh, was indicated two-fifty-eight Royal Dunes. The, uh, again, the engineers continue to do great jobs with, uh, the exhibits. I'll point you to the exhibits that, uh, that, that I think pretty clearly show the, you know, kind of the project in its, in its totality. Is it, uh, is it said it's an application for a home and, uh, appropriate amenities that go along with that? It is within the dune protection area and will impact the critical dunes. However, the, uh, the mitigation and the compensation, uh, was deemed appropriate by, uh, the reviewing engineer and hence was found to be consistent with our coastal management plan and approved by planning and zoning. So that is the, uh, that is the staff's recommendation. You'll also note there is a, uh, in, in the subdivision, there is a rear building line, but they do stay, uh, they do ste- they do stay landward of that, uh, rear building line. Uh, we did receive, uh, comments back from the general land office, which were also, uh, uh, routine and, and didn't take any objection to the project as well.
Rick, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it says that the mitigation is required prior to or concurrent with the commencement of the construction. Is that the plan?
Yes, ma'am, that, that's pretty typical, in other, they need, obviously, to begin the construction, they need to start removing the material, and that material is then placed in the mitigation site, so.
So it's not just sit somewhere and.
Correct.
Yeah, that's true. And then it says, "The city shall provide written notification to GLO after determining the mitigation is complete." Uh, who does this?
Again, uh, as, as we've talked about, although challenging, that is, that still falls to staff. They are given up to three years to complete the mitigation. Uh, in these type projects, uh, usually they, they move pretty quickly and the mitigation is done at or around the time that the property is being completed.
Yeah. And so that's.
The single-family projects become a little easier to, to monitor, uh, because they're considered, they're, uh, usually concurrent with certificates of occupancy, which indicates they're finished. And, and by that point, the mitigation has to be finished, so it's a little easier to, to, to monitor those.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments or concerns?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Mayor's second. Yes, sir, can I have one more second motion?
All row.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Can I have one more?
Yes.
Councilmember Soline?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes. All right, our next item. Item H, right?
I'm sorry, sir?
Feeling each?
We're gonna be on item I.
Item I, mayor.
Dune permit application BSDP twenty-eighteen ninety-five to allow for the construction of improvements widening to an existing, existing dune walkover as submitted by Beachwalk N U D Homeowners Association for the property located two-seven-six Beachwa- Walk Lane. It's considered, uh, consistent with the city's coastal management plan. Rick?
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor, uh, council. So, uh, as the mayor indicated in the, in the description, this is a, a request from the Beachwalk N U D to widen, uh, and then terminate the, the walkover of, sitting in the same footprint. Fairly, uh, fairly, uh, fairly routine request, uh, as I said, it will go on the same footprint. The, uh, the, the one request that, uh, that we make and that was, was a function of the planning and zoning motion to approve, which, uh, was given, was that we, uh, we do reserve the right to, uh, have the final say-so in the terminus, just kind of coordinating with the, the contractor, uh, and, and, uh, we request a visual stakeout of exactly where the limits of that exit are gonna protrude onto the beach, just, just to make sure it's consistent. are going to protrude onto the beach, just, just to make sure it's consistent. And with that, like I said, this was, uh, this was approved by planning and zoning. It's consistent with our, our coastal management plan and, uh, uh, received all the, the appropriate approvals and the reviewing engineer and general land office.
Hey, do I hear any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Well, go, go first, Joan.
Okay, um. I know that y'all are going to work with them to say where it's, the footprint is, is going to be on the beach and the dunes there. But then understand that the dunes have been, I guess, changed over time since their walkway was put in. So now the walkway is out on the beach. Um, and accretion may occur, so it's going to change it back and forth. So I think it's going to be very difficult for you to decide where to put it, right?
Uh, it, 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 it will be a challenge. We have, uh, uh, David's aware of this. We had, uh, sent in, uh, as is provided in the, uh, the natural resource code, a letter to Commissioner Bush regarding the, uh, the, the changed line of vegetation from the, the various coastal flooding events we saw. And the proposal that, or the, the way the, the statute is written is that on, on approval, they can, they can continue to leave the line of vegetation where it was prior to. And so I submitted a report that showed the, uh, the erosion and did request that they, they did invoke that, uh, did invoke that. We have not heard back. So, uh, we're, we're moving on, uh, on the assumption that the line of vegetation will remain where it was to give the beach a chance to, uh, to restore naturally and accrete. But, but we will be very sensitive to that and we will look at where, you know, where it was. And, and ultimately it ends up, the reason we requested that, we don't want, we don't want there to be a change in our, uh, our travel way width by them moving the line of vegetation back just after a coastal flooding event. We didn't think that was appropriate. So.
Right.
You're right, we will watch that and, and, uh, again, work with our, our beach supervisor to just make sure that, you know, we maintain plenty of, uh, plenty of, of travel way.
Thank you.
Okay, uh. Yeah, I got just a question. And since they're making this wider, are they making it, are they raising it or is it considered the same elevation?
Uh, you'll see the profile, so they are raising it, um, again, to, to, uh, I think this one in its entirety is above the dunes, but they, they will, they will raise it.
To maintain the one to one or one and a half to one or whatever height to, uh, heights to width. Cause I just, I didn't see it in there and I'm sure they were doing it, that's why I'm asking.
Right, it, um, I'm trying to see where the profile is, um.
There's a, there's one page 222 of the packet if you're.
Correct, I'm looking, uh, so you'll see there's the walkover detail. It's, uh, exhibit H on my package. I'm not sure what number it is on, uh, for you guys.
Page plat survey, yeah.
It's a walkover detailed profile, but, but to answer your question, yes, it is, it is going up. And it's in their interest to elevate it anyway, just, uh, to, uh, eliminate, uh, maintenance issues with the blowing sand and.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So Rick, in, in reference to the line of vegetation, you think we, any chances of hearing anything back? Is there anything we have to state in approval that if you get anything back that may change what we're looking at today or?
We, we would just simply like in, in the motion, just to, 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 to allow us to be the, uh, allow staff to be the final determinant in that, uh, where that, that terminus will, will physically be. Just so there's no, uh, there's no, uh, argument on the part of the engineers and designers and contractors, uh, that want to hold to the, the absolute design you see here. Like I said, sometimes it, uh, and it's not often, but sometimes we feel it needs to be tweaked and, and again tucked back in consistent with the other terminuses. So just, just, uh, if you trust staff to just monitor that and ensure that it's, it's consistent with the other ones.
I'll make a motion to approve dune permit application, B F D P 201895 to allow the construction of improvements to widening to an existing dune walkover as submitted by the Beachwalk N U D Homeowners Association, uh, mentioning reference to, you know, staff continuing to do their monitoring of the vegetation, E T C.
Mayor second.
Well, then second it.
Joe, did you second it?
I think that.
Yes.
That.
All or no?
Councilor Soline?
Yes.
Councilor Owen? Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Crawford?
Yes.
Councilor Holt?
Yes.
Mayor Burton Moore?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
Okay, item J. Final plat, 202494. William R. Ellis subdivision, block two, lots two, three and four. Point eight five, five acres. Being a replat of lots one through 11, block three. The Captain H M Teller tract. An 11-foot wide strip of land between Captain H M Teller track and lot one, block three. Shown on a map made for J M Ellis. Recorded in volume five, page 23. Miscellaneous map, map records of Nuaces County, Texas. A 1,650 square foot tract of land described as tract two in document number eight, seven, 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 six, nine. Deed records of Nuaces County, Texas, together with remaining, uh, 261, uh, foot by 11.6 foot strip of land. Of a 11.6 foot by 591 foot strip of land described in a quick claim deed as recorded in volume 32, pages 197 to 198. Deed records of Nuaces County, Texas. Said point eight five eight acre tract of land being all of a point eight five five acre tract of land described as exhibit A, recorded in document number two oh oh, four oh, two, three, five, one, seven. Official public records, uh, Nuaces County, Texas said point eight five eight, eight, five, eight, eight, five, eight, five acres. Being the same point eight five eight acres described in a warranty deed with vendor's lien from, uh, from Price Properties LTD. A tax limited partnership to P F, B A F W Holdings LLC. A Texas limited liability company, recorded in document number two oh one, nine oh three, three, four, nine, eight, six. Said pub, official public records. Applicant is B A F, B A W F Holdings LLC. Property location is 722 Torp.
Thank you, mayor. So this is the, uh, probably best, uh, described as, is the location. We're gignitous presently and some additional, uh, some additional lots. It's actually a consolidation of 11 lots into the three that, that you see on the exhibit. The, uh, there is an existing structure there that, uh, does need to be removed. That was a part of the planning and zoning approval, which, uh, uh, was given subject to the, uh, the removal of that building, simply because we can't, uh, it would cause a, uh, an encroachment if we allowed to plat into this configuration with the, the building there. So there is an understanding that, uh, and, and I would request, uh, if approved to be part of the motion that, um, that the structure be removed prior to recording, uh, final recording of the plat. As I said, it's a consolidation, lots in a strip into the three lots. Um, and it will result in the, the existing building gignities, as it were, to be removed. The gas department, uh, did request utilities approved the replat. The gas, uh, the gas, uh, department did request a five-foot gas easement, uh, that was also, uh, uh, part of that motion. So, uh, that's what you have before you. We have no other, uh, development plans at this point other than just the replat. So staff recommends approval with those two conditions, which were part of the planning and zoning motion, which is the removal of the structure prior to, uh, recording. And the, uh, five-foot gas department easement is noted on the plat.
Is that the, uh, the entire? If you're going down Torp, and is that the entire right-hand side of the street that's going to be removed? Three gignities.
It is a significant portion of that right side. It would have taken into where the old bank was, part of the property that, uh, the structures had, had already been demolished. But it's, uh, the, the bulk of that right-hand side.
What about the left-hand side of the street? Bernies and Shorties and?
I do not know.
Rumor has it that those are still under lease and not, nothing's going to happen to those in the very near future.
Are you saying part of that building is going to be left? It's not all going to be taken out?
No, 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 the, the, a portion of the structures that were already there, some of the retail space has already been demolished. So really left is.
Everything will be cleared from the.
But yes, ma'am, but, but the, uh, the remaining structure that's there, which is gignities, uh, which I understand closed down Halloween. I, uh, I've been there, but I think the, I think Halloween was their last day. That will be demolished and, and, and would need to be before we recorded the plat.
Any questions? I hear a motion.
I'll make a motion, final plat, F P L T 202494, William R. Ellis subdivision, block two, lots two, three and four. Approval and with the two, uh, additions of, with the adding to, excuse me, the existing structure removal prior to recording of the plat. And also noted the five, uh, the, the five-foot gas department easement noted on the plat. Those being included.
And I will second that.
Let's call the roll.
Mayor Burton Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Owen?
Yes.
Councilor Holt?
Yes.
Councilor Crawford?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
Okay, item K. It's a preliminary and final plat. Twenty, twenty-five, thirty-five. Block cottages, townhomes, block one. Block one, units one through 28. And lot one, lot two, 3.41 acres of land being a portion of lot six, block 32. All of lot seven, block 32. And a portion of lots four and five, block four and five, block fifty, uh, thirty-seven. State land surveys on Mustang Island, Nuaces County, Texas. I said 3.41 acres being comprised of a point seven eight two acre tract of land described in a special warranty deed. Contribution from Wickham, uh, Airline Partners LTD. Thirty-two percent interest in Ocean B C LLC, 68% interest to Laughing Rock. LLC as recorded in document number two oh one, eight oh one, three, nine oh one. Official public records of Nuaces County, Texas. Tracks one, two and three, described as a special warranty deed with vendors leaning from 503 G L P to Laughing Rock LLC, recorded on document number two oh one, eight oh one, five, three, five, five of the said official public records. Applicant is Laughing Rock LLC, property location is 603 Avenue G.
Hey, Rick, when, when you kicked this off, could you give council kind of an, uh, a history of how many times you guys have seen this and the previous issues? Just, just.
Sure. And that, and actually that's, that's, uh, I, I, I was going to lead, lead off with, with that very statement was that this has had a, a fairly lengthy journey and, uh, has gone through, uh, a, a couple of, of trips back to the drawing board, if it were, uh, simply to, to, to get some things right. Uh, it, uh, it, it was a, uh, it was a, a dense project relative to some of the things we had seen. And, uh, most recently it went back to the drawing board just to ensure that, that the density was in, in conformance with our, um, with our, uh, development code. And, uh, and actually it was a project that prompted us to make a policy change that we actually want, uh, we want to see density calculations, uh, from here on out, starting with this project. And prior to that, there were some setback issues and concerns. We had, uh, the setbacks since it did, since it did, uh, have, uh, did include Trojan and Avenue G. Uh, again, we just wanted to ensure that we got it right. So, uh, it, uh, it, it's been a lengthy journey and it has gone back, uh, it has gone back twice for, for changes and tweaking and corrections and what we think, uh, what we have here, uh, after lots of, lots of scrutiny and lots of, of deliberation, uh, we, we feel confident that it does, uh, it does conform with our existing codes, uh, including our development code with respect to density. Uh, and we have the setbacks that, that we feel are, uh, are proper and identified in our codes, uh, on Avenue G. So it is a 28-unit townhouse project and I, in Fran, I believe that, uh, just so, uh, we do have Stephen Grunwald. Uh, I think, uh, I, I heard him announce, uh, and I think we have, uh, Alex Harris, who's, uh, one of the principals. So again, both of those I believe are, are on the line if there's any additional information. Uh, but pretty straightforward. Uh, like I said, it is a, a, a 28-unit, uh, townhouse project. Uh, it does have all the, uh, all the, the, uh, it does meet all the requirements, uh, most importantly, density and the, and the setbacks uh, off of the, off the different arterials that are involved. Does utilize internal circulation, uh, will not have access off of Avenue G, which was important to us and.
Sorry, did you say it's not going to have access to Avenue G?
It, it, the, the individual units will, will not be accessed off, off of G, that.
Lots one through nine cannot have vehicular access.
I thought you said they were, okay, yes.
Uh, yeah, it was, I was referencing the internal circulation that, that does come off at the driveway. But the units themselves will not, uh, will not have access to G. Uh, they will be, uh, they will be, uh, they will provide for four, uh, for parking spaces per unit.
Yeah, I couldn't see how you can access units 19 through 27. There doesn't seem to be any roadway there.
It's the dash line, Joan, it says 40-foot access and utility easement.
It's, it's the white, it, it essentially, it's the white area, but, but between those become the access. Uh, it's an access easement. It's back around.
So it's going to be parking underneath or inside, well, basically underneath the units, is that correct?
Correct.
It's a little bit easier to see, Joan, on page 262. Then what Joan might know, that page right there, if you go to 262, the next one, you can kind of see the roadway a little bit better.
A little more, Fran, just there, there you go.
Yeah. Yeah, that is better, okay.
Kind of a, a racetrack approach, if you will, on, on, on the interior side, on the internal side.
And these are all just kind of like short-term rental hotel kind of things?
Uh, well, this is a commercial two zoning, so it, it would certainly, uh, certainly allow for, uh, for, for rental.
Hey, Rick, there's a, a note there, I guess, from the gas department about approval, subject to complying with Porter and States Code ordinance, chapter 21 subdivisions?
Yes, sir.
I just.
Uh, Mitch is really good about that and we work well with the gas department. Again, our, our, our code of, that section simply says that, uh, all developments must, uh, provide. access to, to gas. Doesn't mean that they have to put it in the units, but they have to, they, they have to bring it there and be available. We can't require it to be an all-gas dwelling unit, but, but we do require that it, they at least make gas available to those, to those sites. And that's what he's referring to.
Does that need to be an approval note, or is that just an automatic, that's all?
That, that is in our, that is in our code.
Okay. Just restating it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on. We're in item L.
Where we need to vote, Mayor?
Yeah, we gotta-
Probably, I'd ask you to vote on it.
Let's vote.
Okay, I'm sorry, hang on. I'm just getting myself together here. Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the preliminary and final plats, as stated.
I second it.
Call the roll.
Senator Crawford?
Yes.
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 Senator Owen?
Yes.
Davidson Moore?
Yes.
Senator Chris Solomon?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we are on-
L.
L. Final plat, 202534, Cinnamon Shore, South Unit Three, part of Cinnamon Shore Two, Cinnamon Shore Two PUD, 6.1 acres, being a replat, block one, block one, lot 31, block one, lot 33, block one, lots 26, block two, lot 32, block two, and lot 22, block five. Cinnamon Shore, South Unit One, Cinnamon Shore Two, PUD, map of which is recorded in volume 6969, ages 144, 148, map records of Nueces County, Texas, applicant is Mustang Island Development Incorporated, property location 5800, Highway 361. Rick?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, is, is all of you, I think, have grown accustomed, our larger developments down south incorporate a phased-type development process. So this is just, again, a phase that they have, have come in, in some instances modifying, but, but in most instances, just plating for, to prepare for development of those individual lots. But it's an opportunity to go in there within the purpose and flexibilities that are afforded of a planned unit development. But oftentimes, they, they, they look to modify lot sizes and basically the philosophical, philosophical approach, depending on the market conditions. But it's, it's very, it's very common that we start to see these larger, larger sections replanted as already developed. And that's what we've got here. We've next, what I'll call phase, that they are going to prepare for, you know, for, for building. So it is consistent with their initial PUD, as a residential mixed-use, flexible-type planned unit development. And there was, this was approved by planning and zoning, is consistent with our development codes, and we recommend approval.
I had a philosophical question for you before we get into this, and this is either for David or for Rick. At what point does a, a PUD revise itself so much that it no longer becomes a, the original PUD that we passed as a council?
So the way the, the way the PUD ordinance works is that it allows minor revisions to be done at the administrative level. Of course, all the plats are still brought to you guys. So if they wanted to reconfigure a lot of, some blocks, redo minor things that don't really change the integrity of what they originally submitted to council and was, what was approved, I can make those changes. Once it, once it's, once I deem it too big of a change, I bring it back to you guys, which in the past, you guys have seen, like when Cinnamon Shore did a, they did a major revision once, but me has done several major revisions. So it's really, Bruce, it, the, the PUD language, it's kinda, it's, it's kinda vague. It's, it's almost like a call on my part. It just says, when the city manager deems it not to exceed more than a minor, but there is no definition of what a minor change is.
Sure.
So I just play it by ear. I mean, as long as I don't think it's-
Intent or whatever.
Some, a lot of substance, I, I, I do it. Otherwise, I bring it to you guys.
The planned unit development is, is, is again, residential and mixed use. So occasionally that you'll see is a, either a consolidation of a few lots, multiple residential lots to do a townhome, or sometimes consolidating lots to build smaller cottage style, just, again, depending on the flexibility, but it's still within the residential, the residential area. So that's usually why we don't, you know, and again, if it gets beyond that, then, then I consult with David and we just decide. And then that's, that's when you see it back.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yep.
Anything else?
There was some, again, if you'll notice, again, gas department, there is the same, the same basically language referring to the ordinance and the underground, the minimum requirements is referenced in the 21227. So you might just wanna incorporate in this one. There is some requirements for placement of underground gas lines further from the building line.
Rick, isn't that already in the code?
No, that's what I'm saying. I'm sorry, this is the same thing as we had before. So no need to include it in the-
I'm sorry, we do or do not?
Do not. Do not.
Okay, thank you.
We did the last one.
Well, I didn't, so I just, I didn't, I was like, okay.
It's the same thing.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve final plat, FPLT 202534, Cinnamon Shore, South Unit Three. They did an item L.
I will second that.
Call the roll.
Senator Crawford?
Yes.
Davidson Moore?
Yes.
Senator Solomon?
Yes.
Senator Owen?
Yes.
Senator Moore?
Mayor B. Young?
Did you get Wendy's?
I did. I was trying to get your prize.
She was trying to get me to vote for you.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is a good one.
Only 7:40, you got all night.
Yeah. It's item L, item, first reading of an ordinance, amending Chapter 12, licenses and business regulations, Article Eight, short-term rentals, and providing for severance and reading, and effective date. You wanna take this, Rick?
Yes, sir. So at the, at the last meeting, I think Councilwoman Solomon brought some issues up that had come to her and was, what we heard as staff was that, you know, let's, let's take a look at some of, some of these things. And I worked with Shannon, and I think it, it started with our language with respect to occupancy, where it references children. And that has kind of proven a little bit difficult, you know, for, for a lot of people. And, and I think the, the belief was, is that perhaps we just simply limit the occupancy. It's our ordinance said the two per room plus an additional four. One of the other things in our discussions, when we were looking at these things, and we added some, some other tweaks that we felt were, were appropriate, that you have before you in the red line. But one of the other ones that, that, again, goes back to the occupancy, we have in our, in our ordinances, and it, and it's usually in the, in the first section of almost all the building codes, all the building codes, that, you know, a lot of times, the, the more stricter of a regulation applies. I, I fundamentally have a problem with that, using that in an, in an ordinance for somebody when they come in and they look at what we've written, and then it turns out that, you know, buried in the code book, there's something deeper. So when, when we were looking at the occupancy, this was one of those examples where, you know, there's, there's an adopted code that was, I think, first adopted in 2000, the International Property Maintenance Code, that is the, is pretty much the code that, that looks to occupancy, actually had some very specific provisions with respect to occupancy and the space requirements. And so when we were, when we were tweaking that with respect to the, the children allowance, essentially removing that, we also, just to make it very clear that, you know, rather than relying at some point in the future, that, oh, you know, this, this code that we have is, is the more stricter, we just put it right into that section of the ordinance and said that the stricter, stricter shall apply. And so that's why you see that language as it is, because if, if the idea was to manage, you know, the, the safe and reasonable occupancy, you know, like I said, it was always a stricter of the two, but, but that wasn't right here with the ordinance. So we felt it was, you know, with a lot of these things, that we're gonna hold somebody to the stricter standard, we need to be a little bit more transparent and let that be seen right up front. So that's the occupancy part. Some other tweaks that, that Councilwoman Solomon and I worked at were some things that give us a little bit more enforcement, a little bit more enforcement authority for those things that, and a little bit more identification requirements on the, the short-term rental owner, which is providing a placard outside the, the primary entrance, that simply provides that registration number, I mean, the, the contact number, 24/7 contact number, the occupancy, and, and their, the registration number, which we've applied, which we've required to be shown in all advertising. So that, that was one of them. We added in, again, about excessive noise or disturbances, a timeframe where we felt that it was, it was reasonable to prohibit excessive noise, and, and just require that it be moved inside. And then, like I said, the others just kind of restated penalties that are already in existence, but we just put it here, so it's, it's very clear, you know, safety violations, any safety violation, life safety violation carries a penalty up to $2,000. But like I said, we wanted to make it very clear that, you know, violations of some of these things, you know, have some pretty severe penalties. I think that was primary, and then some other ones that a lot of times, for us to be able to, to, to write a citation, the, the violation occurs after hours, and usually is something that are, that somebody other than code enforcement sees, mainly police. And so we did, you know, we, we did take a page from a lot of other jurisdictions and did allow a visual observation of crowding, to at least give us the ability to, to, to go to that property owner or manager and say, look, we observed a violation, you know, what's the story? You know, let, let's see how many people were laying there. Is it really a violation of our, of our crowding ordinance? I think those were the, those really were the ones that you see in red line. So I'll stop there and answer questions or let Councilwoman Solomon chime in.
Do you have any questions first?
Well, I, I basically have some questions, but why don't you go ahead and, and start, and then I'll-
The reason this even came about is because there's been numerous issues throughout town, and after doing, well, I've been working on this for about three years, it always boils down to the same problem, too many people in one space. So that goes with your parking, your garbage, your noise. It all boils down to how many people are being allowed to be in one space. So after reviewing this, we already have an ordinance on the books that hasn't been enforced. It needs to be enforced. And the, the building code actually supersedes that as far as occupancy. So it's already there in play. It just needs to be enforced. I think that by marrying the two together, we'll have a, a better way to kind of spread out the cars, the people, instead of compacting everybody into one space. Do you have any questions?
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll tell you, I, sorry. So one thing that I, I was looking at, and this one was, it all seemed like it was very like, you know, if a, like, if there's too many people, violation, you know, it's like very, very thing. One thing's that I kind of ran to, would became like, very stepful, but then all of a sudden, we get excessive noise or disturbances outside of short-term rental. I kind of have a problem with that, and only the simple fact that, say, you have some short-term renters out on, on a patio, and they're not, they're not being loud, but they're having a glass of wine, maybe laughing, and someone who lives nearby says, oh, they're out at 10:01, I'm calling the police, because they have to be inside. I just think that that one is, and I understand that there's excessive noise, and there's already a noise ordinance, I just don't want it to be used as a club to say, well, if you live here, you're allowed to stay out, and you're about to be past 10 o'clock, but if it's short-term rental, you have to be inside at 10 o'clock.
Right.
I don't know if that's a, I don't know if that's fair. I don't, maybe fair is not the right word, the right thing.
It was included simply because it wasn't included in the first place, and it's already an ordinance.
Sure.
So just to, like I said, to kind of marry some of the ordinances that we already have in existence, and to let people know that this is in fact an ordinance.
Well, it doesn't say they can't be out there.
No, well, I mean, it's-
No.
Because they can't be making excessive noise.
Or other disturbances. And it could be that, that, you know, say, the, the light's on the porch, and they're outside having a glass of wine or, or drinking a beer and not making excessive noise, but you're next door, and you want them to be indoor. I don't know. I don't know if that's a issue or not. I do know that we already have a lot of noise ordinances, and the ones we have are very hard-fought. And I just wanna make sure that we're not using this as a tool to, you know, chase people off porches at 10:01, if that makes sense.
It, it's the same as if you were a full-time resident living here. It's the same ordinance.
Then why put it in?
Why leave it out?
Why put it in? What's the difference between my house, that I'm porch, full-time, you know, I live there full-time, and I may have 20 people staying at my house because I, you know, whatever, and then the, my next-door neighbor's a short-term rental. I mean, if, if it's an ordinance, if the noise ordinance is already there, you know, and we all have to abide by it, right? Why make an extra provision in this? I mean, are you just trying to overemphasize? Is, is the additional violations that are added down here at 5% per, $500 per offense, blah, blah, blah? Is that more onerous than what the current ordinance is? It's the same.
It, it's not. Those, those are all in place now, but again, for transparency, and there's a lot of places in our, in our ordinances where we, we repeat certain, certain components. And like I said, you're right, we could, we could enforce without it. It's just that it's in one place. It's just in one place. And, 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 and yes, it, it may be redundant, but we just, again, so it's whatever your pleasure is. It was just-
I just, I just wanna make sure it's not-
They didn't have to dig deeper in our ordinances elsewhere, and, and it wasn't a surprise when we said, wait a minute, you, you know, you're, you're being too noisy. And they said, does that say they're in a short-term rental ordinance? So it, it's, it's not gonna-
It might just be clear to mention it, Rick, in this ordinance, but just, just refer back to Section 10-51, might be easier.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my preference. I'm not saying don't do it. Don't get me wrong. I mean, I, I don't, I don't want a bunch of loud people in my long-term neighborhood today. I mean, I get the, I get the-
The benefit is that the noise ordinance doesn't have an hourly thing. If you're raising hell at 6:00 PM-
Exactly.
With a regular noise ordinance, you can call the police, and they're gonna come over and say, you're unreasonable. you're unreasonably loud, turn it down.
Right. And that's what I think makes it a little bit confusing. I mean, someone's going to read this and then go, oh, well, heck, I could do it in short term. But I mean, Bob's just letting me stay at his house for the weekend and his in short term and that means I can party all night long. I mean, maybe there's a way to, like to Dave's point, emphasize that everybody has to follow that rule.
Reference back to.
And Dave's idea actually encompasses the same thing. We put it in there, but we just reference our other noise and nuisance and lights, any, you know, all of those nuisance ordinance. We can just refer back that they all apply. We we mentioned that with respect to a golf cart. I think we referenced in in the older ordinance and nothing changed with that, that if you have a golf cart, all the same rules apply. It doesn't matter that it's a short term rental, the same rules and we refer back to that. We can we can tackle these the same way.
And I think that, I mean, and I get like the majority of those problems come from short term rentals. I don't disagree with that and I'm not saying that, you know, we shouldn't, we've got to tackle these issues, right? I mean, they're they're real and and we have concerns coming from, you know, all over. So rather than putting like an additional mention of it in an ordinance that a tourist is never going to read, you know, is there a better way to achieve that? Meaning, you know, somehow make it mandatory that every short term rental agency, individual, whatever, you know, has to provide a homeowner with the rules, right? That's literally just has, you know, ordinance, noise ordinance, guess what? It applies to everyone. If you violate the ordinance.
Yeah, we actually have that in 12-253, what the owner is is obligated on a sheet to tell them. And and that is number five, noise and lighting restrictions. So.
They don't abide by any of that.
In there.
Nope, they don't.
By any of that. I'm sorry, it's like pissing in the wind.
Well, don't forget I moved out of my neighborhood.
It doesn't, it doesn't, they don't abide by.
It's noisy and terrible.
So my suggestion is restrict restrict the number of short term rentals, period.
Well, you tell me how to do that, Mayor, because that's a taking and we're going to spend the next 10 years in court.
It's not a taking because you're not taking anything away from those that are grandfathered.
We don't want to get that in court, that's the whole point. Okay, well, um, so, yeah, I mean, I again, I'm I'm not opposed to having that. But if it's already in the ordinance, it just, you know, again, a tourist is not going to read this.
I agree.
I mean, just reference.
Referencing.
Yeah, yeah. And 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 again, I think referencing the fact that it applies to everyone has more teeth, right? I mean, so.
I don't think it has any teeth at all.
I'm trying to emphasize that it's supposed to be short term.
The only way that you can resolve this issue is listen to the townspeople who are telling you that we've had enough short term rentals.
Right, but what do you do about it? I've been trying for three years.
Just to enforce what we already have.
Sure.
Amen.
Exactly. And then I think too, we've been managing condos.
Shannon's parking thing is is part of it, but it's not all of it. You wouldn't have a parking issue if you restricted the short term rentals.
Yeah, I disagree, but okay.
But there's not parking issues in all short term rental places. There are some that are horrible.
Different subjects. But what I'm saying to you is one ties into the other.
Right.
To the matter is that you're the the people in this town, and I hear from them every single day, would welcome the restriction of short term rentals, period.
Right.
Yeah, this is Chuck and you guys, and that's going to be the tough part of doing that. But yeah, you're right. But a lot of it falls on to the business owner. We've been managing homeowner associations in this town for 34 years. And I'll tell you, we've been fortunate to do homeowner association condos in a restricted area and we do have occupancy limits. We do enforce the codes, life safety, et cetera. You are going to have knuckleheads that are going to come in and do what they're going to do and try to break rules. And what what do we have in place? How do we police that? Well, it's up to us as 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 business owners and operators to police it, but we have to have guidelines. And I take, I commend Shannon. Well, I understand. Something, you got to have a process and then you got to have something plausible when they.
Let me be frank about this. It's more about money than it is enforcing the codes. Making money.
Not necessarily everybody.
Pack them in.
Well, I I I didn't I didn't prepare anything to to restrict it. I just kind of, you know, my marching orders were to try to take what we had and maybe make it a little bit more palatable. So that.
I hear from every day citizens in this town, every single day about short term rentals. And the only way you take care of that problem is to restrict the number that you have. Other cities have done it throughout the country.
Where?
San Diego.
Go.
Well, I think this is a real good try anyway of trying to get something started that's going to help. And I really think we should go ahead with it, take Wendy's idea.
How's it gonna, how's it gonna help?
Take Wendy's idea and make sure that we say that this is a code that is and give the relationship of that code to our other codes about noise and that applies to everyone, even short term rentals.
We have noise regulations right now and they're not obeyed.
I think one thing that.
You ought to get yourself, Joan, you ought to get yourself a police radio and you too, Wendy, and listen to that radio day in and day out about the problems that we're having with STRs.
Charles, I don't think anybody denies that there are problems with short term rentals, okay? And I think even if you did enforce a restriction starting tomorrow on any more short terminals to be built, right? Just said, this is it, we're not doing any more, period, we're stopping. You're still going to have the same problem with all the ones that you have. Not all of them are going to have problems, to Chuck's point. You know, it's not all of them. So so I don't know that saying.
Not all of them, but you're just going to add to the bundle.
Well, maybe so.
You're going to have to deal with it.
But stopping.
Our new police and new officers on duty to to take care of all these problems that are coming up every day.
Well, maybe that's the answer. Maybe it's more enforcement of the ordinances because.
I do have.
Find that in the budget to to increase the the staff, go ahead.
Well, do you have a suggestion, Mayor, what we can do? Besides just saying it? What could we, how can we do it?
Shannon's got something.
Something we.
We just restrict what we have, that's it, no more.
Same zoning or what?
Rick has a list of short term rentals, do you not?
Oh, we have a list of those that have registered, correct.
Okay.
That's not inclusive and, you know, that that's a moving target because properties come and go and they're bought and sold and enter the market and exit the market, but we have a starting point.
Are you saying, are you saying it's not controllable?
Only if it was on the entire town R1.
I'm I'm saying that that whatever you whatever you instruct me to do is what we'll we'll make every effort to do.
No, I'm I'm putting you on the spot. Not enforceable.
I I don't know, I don't know what what you're talking about being enforceable. I mean, I I think things like we're doing.
Restricting short term rentals.
Guys, aren't we supposed to be focusing on this? And I I think this is a lot to look at in trying to make decisions tonight. But I mean, I know we're hating on short term rentals right now, but we have to step back. It's because of short term rentals that is providing our sales tax, our hotel tax.
Money, everything.
We can't, they they provide.
Money is not everything.
Island.
Sanity of the people that live here count.
I get that, but that we have to have a balance. I get that. But I mean, right now it sounds like we're hating on short term rentals.
It's overbalanced, it's overbalanced in favor of short term rentals.
Hey, Mayor, guys, let Shannon finish, she's got something to say, please.
Ensuring a safe and code compliant legal occupancy rather than unsafe overcrowding will likely result in expanded demand for rental units leading to increased hot tax. We know this. It will also segregate the amount of parked cars we have in one space. My goal, like I originally stated, was to get back to the 2016 ordinance that was already passed. We need to start enforcing it. And that has to do with your building code. Your building code supersedes the amount that we were legally allowing per unit. So my suggestion was, I've made that the red lines are the the changes that would correct the problem, close some of the loopholes that happen with the wording of adult versus child because no one's monitoring that.
So this.
And get us back on track where we need to be. I I don't see it's going to basically bankrupt anyone. Most of the people that own rentals are compliant, if not unaware. So I don't think it's going to be a huge overburden for most people with rentals.
I I I I know last month we we brought this up and it was under the preference of parking being an issue and, you know, all the other things, right? And and we all agreed that we need to look at it. And I do think we need to look at it. I think there are a lot of things that, you know, we need to look at. I think there's been a lot of concerns brought both by both sides of the of the party, right? I mean, obviously, there are a lot of people against a lot of short term rental issues, you know, and then there's, again, it's both sides, right? Every issue we we debate here is going to have two sides. Don't don't disagree with that. I'm not opposed to 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 refining, looking at different rules, you know, trying to see how we can make things better for the quality of life for everybody in Puerto Rico because, I mean, I think that's really the common goal of everybody, whether you live here full time, whether you're a tourist, you know, whatever it is. So I think we should all, you know, focus on that and I think that's our common goal. I am not, I just, I don't feel like I've had enough time to adopt all the changes that are here, you know, after review, we got this stuff Monday, you know, we've gotten pages and pages and pages of, you know, emails and letters and I and I and I want to further look into the codes and what we've been doing and retroactively enforcing them and not. And I'm not saying let's kick the can down the curve for 18 months because that's not going to help anybody, right?
It's been three years already.
Three years of 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 non, not not non enforcement, that's not. Three years of not being able to enforce it to it's not a problem. I don't disagree with you, Shannon, right? This ordinance was a start because, you know, I mean, we saw what was happening, right? As it as the town was growing. It was a start and I think it's helped, I think it's helped in a lot of ways.
The original.
The original short term rental, you know, plan by by permitting and monitoring and, you know, and originally part of that was really to to find a way to capture unpaid hot tax. I mean, that was a big part of it, right? But in addition, we when we when we crafted these things, it was like, hey, okay, now we're going to make people register, so we're going to get the hot tax. And then let's try to find a way to to help fix some of the problems that are created by short term rentals. And again, I I I don't think a lot of the problems are coming from condominiums, you know, dedicated subdivisions or pods or things where everything is pretty much short term. I think the problems, and and again, what we hear a lot from is where you get these pockets or these streets that have a mix of people and, you know, they they weren't designed for short term rentals. They weren't designed for massive parking and all those things. And so I, that's a problem and I think we do need to look at that. And and do we need to do a better job of enforcing? I agree. But I don't know that that what is proposed tonight is probably the end all be all. I would like more time to review it and have more input. One of the problems I have on on item six, that's the maximum occupancy, the way it reads, and and maybe I'm interpreting this wrong because I know it's we're taking out the children thing, right? So when you take out children, it's, I'm just thinking through the box, right? It says maximum occupancy is lesser than that allowed by the adopted building codes or two adults, no, not two adults, two persons personally viewing plus an additional four per dwelling unit. Okay, so how does that apply to say a condo or hotel room that may be large enough to sleep a family of six or five or, you know, how 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 does all that fit into the the box? I mean.
Yeah, it it's.
Because if we eliminate children, we just say people.
Yeah, we, and I agree, Wendy, we we need more time to to work this. Nicole and I did a did kind of a, we took one of the big cinnamon shore houses today. And if you use the city's current short term rental one, it's seven, there were seven rooms. If it if if we're talking all adults that were in this particular house, they would get 14 people plus an additional four, so it was 18. If you use the the International Property Maintenance Code, the occupancy was 32. And and the reason it jumped to 32 was because most of the seven bedrooms were big enough in accordance with the IPMC to put three people in each room. But the IPC also allows you to occupy living space. So a a TV room has a has it has an equation where you have to give X amount of square feet to the TV room, but anything left over is 50 50 square feet per person that can now sleep in it. So this this particular house had this kind of weird upstairs mezzanine that qualified in the in the IPMC to give you six people up in it. Didn't qualify as a bedroom, but under the IPMC, you're allowed to stick six people in it. And then the TV rooms and the living rooms were were spaced large enough to where you could have pullout beds in the sofa beds. And so we were pretty shocked at the difference between our current standard, which is 18, and the IPMC, which was 32. It it was, it's mind boggling, but that was the difference. Now, i- if you if you flip it around and say, oh, well, what if the 18 people brought a couple carloads of kids with them? Now that number increases, but it gets to the point where now the city's having to determine between children and adult and it gets really crazy. We really need just a a body number in the house, but we need more time to really look at the IPMC because it's 32 to 18, so.
Yeah, and there are not a lot of seven bedroom houses in Puerto Rico.
No, they're not.
But I mean, I mean, the example is, you know, I get it, it's a good example. But I mean, you know, and and going back to the the whole bunk bed issue too, you know, I mean, again, I mean, that needs more time to 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 mature and and go through.
Because it's not in here.
It's.
Well, no, well, it's it isn't here because it's occupancy of a bedroom.
Of a bedroom.
But that's not anything that I amended, that was originally agreed on.
Well, no, it's 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 under item six, it's, you know, we're mentioning two people per sleeping room.
Well, that's what I always said, though.
That's in conflict with the.
But it doesn't have a limit when you could add children and most of the children are the ones that sleep in a bunk. So I think that's the issue. And 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 again, I mean.
But nobody's regulating how many people are claiming to be children when you go to register and that's where we're seeing problems.
And you're right, I mean, ultimately, you can put all the rules in the world in effect, right? And there are going to be people that break them. You can give them a sheet that says you can't do anything after 10:00 PM, you've got to be inside your house, you can't even be outside. I mean, we could even, I mean, that could be the Puerto Rican's curfew, right? But, I mean, there are going to be people that just break it.
Of course, we can go from one degree to the other, but we have to do something.
We have ordinances on the book that are never enforced.
Well, then we need to do a better job of that.
Four way stop sign at my intersection and nobody stops, nobody. I recorded on my.
Backside, Mayor, that used to only be a two stop sign intersection.
Yeah. People don't obey the rules.
Right, that's where, again, the association, so you have the rules, they break them, we enforce them and we can act on them. I think with these fees, I like that. I think you go in, you hit them in the pocketbook if they're repeat offenders, maybe extend, you know, terminate their short term rental abilities for a year or 12 months. I mean, that's just certain things, I mean, because like Wendy said, I mean, I just got, I know you just got brought up last council meeting and then all the correspondence coming in just this week have been overwhelming. And I just hadn't had enough time to really sit, but it's a great start.
I'm going to say something to Wendy's points and that is that she said that there's not a lot of seven room houses, but I'm going to tell you, as the city decides that properties are being lots of bought and being subdivided and you're getting two things, I have feeling that's. that's going to probably go away in the near future, but what you're going to get replaced, you're going to get these McMansions again, which the whole point of this is we're trying to make affordable housing, but what they're turning the affordable housing is into is to short-term rentals. So if we say you're not going to be able to subdivide a 6,000 square foot lot anymore, you're going to have a 5,000 square foot house, which is going to be a seven-bedroom house.
Well, then maybe we need to change the rules about that. I mean, again, I think those are all things that we can, I'm not trying to make it an 18-month process, but I do think that we're not going to solve the problem tonight and I would like more time to get more input and.
I will say in your defense, I would like to read the IPMC because, again, I found out about it last night when I got this email from Mazek. And so I would like to see what it says because I did talk to Rick today and he told me that you're going from 18 people to 32 or whatever, and I would like to see, because he said that.
That's a rare, I mean, that's not.
Well, he just said that the IPMC was going to benefit, larger houses would get more occupancy and smaller houses would actually get less than what we're proposing here.
Well, we already have this rule in place, so.
Bruce, you're.
This ordinance is on the books.
The larger houses are going to have these additional TV rooms, video rooms, and that's where in the IPMC, you start, the clock, it starts ticking up on you, you know, wow, they get three in that room, wow, they get two in that room, that's where it's a larger house phenomenon with the calculation that I was mentioning, yes, that's a big house phenomenon. As you scale down, you won't have that extra room in the living rooms and yes, then it's going to go just by the bedrooms.
Sure. Well, I just, again, and I don't necessarily think we need to kick the can down too far, I would like to at least read the IPMC before I, just so I understand what I'm, what part of the calculation it's being based on. But in principle, I don't have a problem with the two plus four per room, I would just like to know that, what it's going to be like as these houses get bigger down the road because maybe that's.
Okay, I can just, one more thing, because my, one of my heartfelt things on this was having the maximum occupancy posted clearly so that as a resident, when I'm driving by, I don't have to guess, okay, there was 18 adults and 27 kids just ran out of that house, is that over occupancy, is it under, is it right where it's supposed to be? And then you call the city, well, the city's closed on weekends, so we'll get back to you on Monday. By Monday, they've checked out. That is what I've been dealing with for three years. So I would really push to have a number, a magic number that.
I stated that at last month's meeting.
If it's down to square footage or bedrooms, however we decide to do it, but other cities have max occupancy clearly posted, hotels have that, it's not uncommon. Elevators have.
Businesses have, businesses have that.
Yes, so.
I got a question, so you have a couple of houses, two families, big houses renting together and each one's got so many people, but then they all go to one house to.
Hey, you can't, you can't do that, I already said that to Rick and it is violation.
Well, I get that, but they're going to do that.
That's exactly what I said, you said, if, if, say you have a house with this ordinance, there's 10 people in house A, 10 people in house B, just for example, we use the two houses behind the Dollar General because they're up on stilts and have like a, one has a pool underneath it and the other has like a patio. So two families rent the house and they all go over to the pool and the police come by after 10 o'clock and they see all 20 people under the house A with the pool, even though half more say anything, that is still a violation.
But we're also giving.
It's not a violation, it, but it, but it could, it could be proof of a violation is what we're saying.
It could be proof of violation, sorry.
Yeah, it doesn't constitute a violation, it just gives us cause to consider it if there's, if there's other circumstances.
Yes, sir.
How many staff members do you need to hire to do this, Rick? Check all of them.
Well, I mean, it just sounds like, it just sounds like they're, they want a little bit more time to look at the IMPC and, you know.
I want a little more time.
Shannon or whomever and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll just continue to do whatever it is, whatever direction you give us.
In the meantime, though, I would, my point is, and I know none of you will agree with this, in the meantime, there should be a moratorium on short-term rentals.
All over the city or just in Old Town or where?
No, in the city, city of Port Aransas.
Even out the highway, huh?
Right, city of Port Aransas, all the way out to the sign.
Well, I would sure like to see it in Old Town and places where people live that they're on, lots and lots of people have houses and two or three.
You gotta do it to one, you gotta do it to all. You gotta do it to one, you gotta do it to all.
It's winter time, it slowed down a little bit.
Chuck, you better get your job at work.
We could just resign everything R2 to R1, mayor, that would take care of the problem.
Yes, it would. You want to propose that?
No, sir, I would resign from counsel because I don't want them the rest of my time in court.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Shannon, I applaud you for working, trying to find a solution to a problem. So I don't want you to interpret my reservation at doing something tonight as, that I'm against what you've proposed. I really do, I hear the concerns of the people who live here and, you know, I hear all the concerns of the people who own short-term rentals, right? So I just think that if this is going to be our job, the seven of us, try to figure out, then I would like some more time.
No, I don't disagree with that.
I agree with that.
And there is a, and I do think that's something that we will probably look at and maybe in the next near future, is maybe we'll look at no longer allowing 6,000 square foot lots to be subdivided in R2.
Sure. Well, as it stands right now, because it's already an ordinance that the restrictions of the building codes are greater, whichever, so we, that is already going forward.
Well, I think that then if that's the case, then when people come to renew next year, Rick can say this is a new number until we get something. So, you know, in a way, maybe you won a little bit in the fact that at least now there's a new number for people to, to look at. Does that make sense?
I don't know, I don't understand at all.
Basically now that we're looking at the IPC or IPMC that Rick's gone back retroly, I don't know, sorry, that's why I read the letter, maybe I misunderstood.
I don't think the letter actually, what happens is we're seeing, we're seeing, we're seeing new and different plans and room configurations than we've ever seen before. So we're seeing, so, and some of them are, some of them are blatantly illegal anyway. And so where they're proposing beds and it's not a bunk bed prohibition, it's a bed prohibition, you know, sometimes they're just in locations that, that they can't be. And so we're basically just calling that out. And then when you look at the, at the, at the IMPC, the property maintenance code, it's very clear, you know, and it's a very, it's a very calculated formula that dictates occupancy. And as David mentioned, that in some instances, it's a greater occupancy. So I, I think, I think maybe that the goal is, is that you, you do come up with a magic number, you know, how many people, people can safely be in a house? For example, Destin, Florida, popular tourist destination, they, they use the same formula we do, two, two per bedroom plus four, but then they have an ultimate cap period of 24 and that's Destin, you know, so that's, that's their approach. So, you know, again, I think that all those options are out there, you know, there just has to be something that's, where there's a consensus with you guys that it's what you want to do.
Yeah, because technically, Bruce, we have two conflicting mathematical formulas for occupancy. We got the short-term rental, which is two per bedroom plus four, and then you have the IPMC, which is 50 square feet per person. So there isn't, so if you have a bedroom that's 150 square feet, you're allowed to stick three in there. If you have a 200 square foot, you can put four and it just keeps going up and up and up, whereas the short-term rentals, ordinance that we have says two, doesn't matter what size it is. So right now we have a conflicting, two conflicting mathematical formulas to calculate occupancy and we got to figure out which one we're going to go with or a hybrid or something, but we have to do that.
Sure, and you made comments.
Dave, I would be interested in knowing what limits that condo that you looked at puts on their occupancy, do they?
Well, it's, it's, it's a new building, so we don't, we don't have a number yet. It's one we're currently reviewing. But what we said was, and we've been talking with other council members, we would like to get it to the point where the architect who's submitting the plans, whatever formula we have, that architect is going to have that formula. And he's going to submit a set of plans and he's going to have a number on each living or each sleeping space, whether it's a bedroom or a potential living, sleeping area like a TV room, he's going to have that number on the set of plans. That's going to be his maximum, maximum person occupancy, this is what we're proposing. And that number goes from the day they submit their plans, it goes through, it's the same number that they would use on their short-term rental. And if you guys chose, it would be the same number that they use in their advertising on BRBO or wherever they're advertising, and it's the same number if you guys chose that they would ultimately post. So that number needs to start with the submittal from the architect with whatever formula we end up going with. And then that number is the magic number that even the police can have on record on the weekends and that number stays with that house in perpetuity.
But we have lots and lots to take care of that are already in place too, so.
I stayed at a house in Surfside two weekends ago and it had 10 bedrooms, one of the bedrooms had four queen bunk bed sets in it.
I don't know how you squeeze all that in one room.
Which we threw a bunch of, we threw all the, all the kids in there and, you know, but it was a, it was about a 12-person, 12 bedrooms, 12, 12 sleeping beds.
I got better, we bought a house on Ninth and Avenue F a lot of years ago and it must have been a five-bedroom, but the thing couldn't have been 1,100 square feet.
Jeez.
You could go in there and touch walls, we had to actually take out two of the walls just to make a proper living space in there.
Right, which is 70 square feet.
Yeah, but I mean, basically, you could like walk in there and touch both walls with your hands.
The three, seven, fifteen.
So let us, so let us, let us take this and we're going to, we're going to take this, staff, rework it, bring it back to you guys.
Okay.
Well, do you want input? I mean, Wendy seems to have a lot of ideas and.
Yeah, we'd like, I mean, we could definitely take, of course, we want input.
Yeah, we, yeah, I think, I think we need to seek input on both sides.
One person just talk at a time because I think the audio going out to YouTube is getting a lot of jumbled mix up.
Sorry.
So is there a motion to postpone till further dates?
I'll make a motion that we table this until further discussion.
Well, I would like to just table it for one meeting, you know, put some limit to it.
All right, whatever you want to do, let's table it.
I don't know that one meeting is going to be enough time, Joan, to make the right suggestions with Thanksgiving and, you know, those kind of things. I'm not saying.
We could definitely bring something back. I mean, it might not be at 100%, but.
Some suggestion.
Bring back and say, hey, this is where we're at, what do you guys think?
It goes through three meetings.
Yeah.
You have time.
Yeah.
Plus, we're out on next week, so, most of us.
But we can have something.
Where are you headed?
Is the motion to postpone.
Grandma's.
Next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Somebody make that motion. Mr. Mayor, we tabled it and we have to postpone it.
Oh, we need to postpone it, mayor. It doesn't need to be a motion.
It needs to be a motion.
Yeah, mayor, a motion to postpone is needed.
Okay, I'm making that motion.
I will second that.
Councilmember Holt? Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen? Councilmember Saline?
Yes.
Maybryton Moore?
Yes.
Mayabriyan?
Yeah.
Councilmember Owen?
You're muted, Beth.
Yes.
Motion here.
Did Joan vote?
Yes.
I didn't vote.
You said yeah?
I said yeah.
No, you were calling me and I said yeah.
Oh.
Mayabriyan?
Yeah.
Motion here.
Oh, my God. Well, this is always fun.
It's why we make the big bucks, sir.
Yep.
Mayor, the next item is in.
You say in?
Yes, sir.
Discuss, take action to appoint members to the airport advisory council or board.
I believe we only have, no, we have two, correct?
Two.
Two people are for the alternate.
Yes, we have two applied for the alternate position. One is Michael Dayon and the second is Charles Castor.
And this is important.
I think we're starting to throw out a name or are we just, how do you, okay, well, how about we go Michael Dayon for airport alternate?
Who's Michael Dayon?
Mayor, he was the one in my office week before last, I think I introduced you to. He's been kind of helping me behind the scenes with Tech dot Aviation, getting our capital project off the ground and getting those guys moving up in Austin. So he's been, he's been pretty active in the, in the airport on the sidelines, but he was in my office a couple weeks ago that I introduced you to.
Yeah, I remember that now. Okay.
So is that a motion taken?
Well, I think we're, does everybody just pick out a thing or I make a motion to pick Michael Dayon?
Second.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Maybryton Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Saline?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayabriyan?
Yes.
Motion here.
Mayor, item O.
Item O is the discuss, take action to appoint members to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Like another recommendation? Our motion?
So Bruce, let me just lay it out real quick. So we have, we have, and Fran, correct me if I'm wrong, we have one alternate open, correct?
That's correct.
And we have two applicants, Barney Farley and Christopher Collins. Both of these applicants have put in for BOA and P and Z and they both requested, their order is the same, their first choice is P and Z, their second choice is BOA. So they both have the same request, so.
That was brought since today at least.
Sure. Correct.
Right.
Yeah. And there's no one else, correct?
Francisco, can you move that down a little bit?
Okay.
Top half.
Did y'all want nominations or do we want?
Up, up, up. No, no, no.
Is he behind me right now?
I can see all the people that are mentioned.
Right here.
I can only see the second page there.
Sure.
I would nominate Chris Collins or BOA.
I was going to nominate Barney Farley, so we got two nominations, whoever wants second, whichever one.
I would nominate Barney Farley as well.
Is that a second, mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Absolute good choice.
Councilmember Clark, you nominated Mr. Farley.
Correct.
As a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I seconded Christopher Collins as well.
So let's, let's just go, just go, just go, yeah, vote, just go council member by council member.
Councilmember Crawford?
Uh, Farley.
Mayor Breton Moore?
Mr. Farley.
Councilmember Salmine?
Chris Collins.
Councilmember Clark?
Farley.
Councilmember Owen?
I'm going to sustain.
And Mayor Bion?
Orley.
And Councilmember Holt?
Chris Collins.
And it looks like that Mr. Farley has the majority of the votes. Could we get a motion to nominate him or?
I make a motion to nominate Barney Farley for Appeals Board.
I second that.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen? Sustaining. And Councilmember Salmine?
Yes.
Mayor Breton Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Bion?
Yes.
Item P, Mayor.
Is to discuss and take action to appoint members to the Charter Review Commission.
Okay, so we have.
I don't understand why we, we, we do this. We never review the charter.
It's, it's a state requirement, Mayor.
Well, why don't we review the charter?
Because, because, well, the process is they review it. And if they have changes or if they have proposals, it would come to City Council and you guys put it to the voter. So you got to put it on the, the vote. So quite often, the Charter Review people will say, we, we don't think there's anything worthy of changing.
Wasn't the last Charter Review, the vending on the beach?
No.
Who was on the last Charter Commission review?
It was Trezold, Jim Atwell, Betsy Churguy.
Chuck Borders.
Chuck Borders. And Georgia Neblet.
Okay, so that represents most of the, a part of town. It doesn't represent Old Town at all.
Well, it's, it's not really about sections of town.
Well, you got.
So you only have one applicant and you got two vacant spots.
And one of them lives in Old Town, so I think that he qualifies for sure.
That's Arnold.
Yes, sir.
So I'll nominate Arnold Gavella for spot four.
And I will second that. Good guy.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen? Councilmember Salmine?
Yes.
Mayor Breton Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Bion?
Mayor, did you vote?
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carried.
Item Q.
Discuss and take action to appoint members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This should be interesting.
Maybe.
We have Lisa Shelton on the phone right now. If you have any questions for her.
So number three, the open is number three slot.
Yes, sir, Mayor. It's, it's place number three. It's a unexpired term, so it's 20. This term expires in what, seven months?
In seven months, yes.
Yeah, so it's only a seven-month term because this one is filling in for someone who resigned from the board, correct? Yeah, so it's only a seven-month term. Eight, nine, eight, nine months, basically. So you have three candidates. Yeah, you have Lisa, Mark and Christopher.
Yeah.
Frank Morgan's supposed to be 7/21/19? It said 7/21/16.
Yeah, that's the type of.
Okay, I just, I talked to him, but I just wanted, okay. Sorry, thank you.
So Lisa Shelton, Mark Wysacki, Saki and Christopher.
I personally would like to mark Wysacki on there. He has some really good ideas and he represents a part of town that is not always represented.
I like Lisa Shelton because she's been a long time and she's pretty much done everything in town and very strong. Also like.
I'll second Mark Wysacki.
I'll second Lisa Shelton.
I will go around ask everyone's vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Clark?
Shelton.
Councilmember Crawford?
Shelton.
Mayor Breton Moore?
Shelton.
Councilmember Salmine?
Shelton.
Councilmember Owen?
I'm sustaining.
Mayor Bion?
Mark.
And Councilmember Holt?
Wysack, Mark Wysacki.
It's a hard one.
Lisa Shelton has the majority of the vote.
I make a motion to approve Lisa Shelton to the Planning and Zoning.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen? Councilmember Salmine?
Yes.
Mayor Breton Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Bion?
No.
Motion carried.
I have a question. We say that these boards, the people that get on there must be knowledgeable of affairs of the city and of the functions and activities of the board that they're on. Do we ever question anybody whether they have any knowledge of any of this stuff? You know, do we have a test to find out?
No, we don't.
And I wonder if we should, you know, insist that people.
Because I know that Mark Wysacki is up to date on city stuff.
Well, I'm not speaking of anybody in particular. I just wonder if we look at that as something that's important, that, that they do have some kind of knowledge of this stuff and that, what their job would be. It seems, we might think about that in the future.
Well, they do list, there, there's a checklist on the application, Joan.
I saw that, yeah. Nothing really, yeah. And I guess they didn't all have things that told me that they had knowledge that would help them.
So where are we?
Item, item, item R.
Is a resolution. Resending Resolution 2020 R 12 Amendment Number One Task Order Number 18 Nature Preserve Boardwalk and Pavilion in the amount of $67,220 with urban engineering, authorizing the correction for the service fees associated with the environmental permitting and, and wetland delineation in the amount of $47,220 for this task order amendment, correcting the total amount for Task Order Number 18 Nature Preserve Boardwalk and Pavilion, authorizing the city manager sign corrected Task Order Agreement.
Ben?
This is Ben Castleberry with the Brodus and Del Sol Harvey Recovery Team. This is just, we're cleaning up this task order and we had to bring it to council for, you know, just the governmental auditing process. Urban's not asking for any more money. It's just clean up the task order to properly bill it and auditing purposes.
So is he trying to say they came in under budget?
Uh, it was, it was $20,000 less, but then the environmental wetland delineation needed to be additional services and not in Urban's primary contract.
So is that going to be awarded to somebody else?
No, it's, they're subcontract, they're subcontractors perennial. What we've done here is we took a $117,000 task order and moved the money around so that Urban Engineering has $50,000 to do the nature preserve boardwalk and the work in the nature preserve that's related to Harvey and giving it a, the 47,000 is for the environmental services of perennial that's under Urban to do their wetland delineation. Does that make sense?
Sort of. So I, I guess I just, I'm not, I'm, when we say we're sending it, we're taking the money away, but we're not getting it back.
That's correct. What, what you'll get back out of us moving the money around in here is $20,000.
Okay. Yeah. Motion to approve.
Let's have some comments on this first.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Oh, Ben?
Yes.
Is this something that you want to do? Is this something we need to do?
This is, we are working on this right now. Urban is, is moving forward with this. We're doing the south boardwalk right now. The design, we're hoping by the end of the year to have that ready to bid. And then we're working through some other aspects with the north boardwalk that's near the, the bulkhead blowout. I think we're really waiting to finish building out the temporary bulkhead before we start that, those boardwalks up there in that area.
Ben, are you looking in any other engineering firms?
We aren't because Urban was already under contract to do this work.
Urban was?
Yes, sir.
They're good enough every time, right? A different engineering firm gets every time, right? Depending on the task order.
Oh, yeah.
It goes to bid.
Yeah.
Motion.
You know what I'm thinking? You know what I'm thinking? David?
What's that?
You know what I'm thinking, David?
What's that?
I'm thinking about that. Boardwalk, I'm thinking about the slant ramp going into.
Mayor, that's not, we're not bringing that up right now.
Second to your motion, Bruce.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Salmine?
Yes.
Mayor Breton Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Bion?
No.
Motion carried.
Okay. Next is S. Brodus and Associates will provide a presentation on Hurricane Harvey recovery.
All right, this is Ben again. I'm going to start with over the last month, the construction that's going on here in Port Aransas. The Chamber of Commerce building that has been completed, the chamber has moved in there. They, their temporary offices have been removed from the site, so they're fully occupied in the new chamber building. And the temporary bulkhead, along with Charlie's pasture pier and Robert Point Park pier, we have awarded these contracts. We're working right now through finalizing permitting and National Marine Fisheries Services, they have a consultation, we're working through some questions they have to get the Army Corps permits. And we're expecting both of these projects to start in January of next year. The high-pressure gas system, we received bids on that project, but the, the low bidder didn't, they missed some of the scopes of services within the project. And the second lowest bidder did not do their documentation right, their, their submittal right. So we decided between the two low bidders being, you know, not qualifying and the next bidder being a million dollars more, that it'd be better for FEMA reimbursement and also just better economically if we rebid the project. So we, we're re-advertising the high-pressure gas system tomorrow and we will have those bids in, I think it's December 12th, but the middle of December. We're doing a three, three-week bid turnaround to, to get better numbers.
Yeah. Too risky, as Ben, as Ben said, to go to that third bidder. FEMA would really come in and drill us on why we did that. And so like, like Ben said, it is just, they hammer you on any fault that they see in your bidding process. And it's just way safer to go back out to bid.
Ben, how many bidders did you have?
We had seven, I believe.
Okay. And so you're going to go back out to bid and then how long are they going to have to re-cement?
They have, they go out today or tomorrow and I believe we're giving them three weeks.
Yeah, and really, they just need to, so it's really, and we'll send it out to everybody, but it's really, they just need to sharpen their pencil. They've done all the legwork. So we, we should get a response pretty quick and we think it'll be good.
We're not, we're not changing the documents. It's the same, it's the same sculpt that the bidder saw the first time, so.
You might see some movement in people's numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe we'll see some pencils being sharpened and, and see some better numbers on those higher bidders.
When we get into, that's the construction side. The design side, we're working through our, our appeal process for the public safety building and the fire station. Both of those appeals are, are packages for arbitration because that's where we're taking this. Their public safety building is due right now, December 18th. And the fire station arbitration submittal is due January 3rd. So we're working through those, packaging our stance on both of those projects. The, as I was talking about before, Charlie's pasture south trail, we are working currently on doing, packaging that design with the whooping crane. And it, it's migration season right now in the Port Aransas. It's going to take, before we can actually start construction on this project, it's going to be March of next year. But with all the environmental reviews with FEMA and doing the design now, I think it should be right on target when we're done with, you know, permitting, that project will be ready. And all the EDA groundwork we're doing in the marina, the Harbor Master Building, the improved parking, the, the DOT 10 project is currently under review with EDA. And we're hoping soon, they have a backlog, but we're hoping soon to get the approval so that we can finalize those signs and get them, get them outbid. So since last time we spoke, we've received $4.1 million of additional reimbursement through the state in FEMA, which has our total payout to date at right around $24 million.
About a quarter of the way to go, isn't it? What we said, that's about a quarter of the way to go, what we expected. Okay.
Yeah. And that's the updates I have. Are there any questions? Comments?
Doing a good job, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
You guys have a good holidays.
Yeah, have a safe travels.
All right, item T is a resolution. Authorizing. Authorizing a donated, community-sponsored fireworks show on December thirty-one, twenty-twenty. Entering into an agreement with Pyro Shows Incorporated to provide a New Year's Eve fireworks display in Roberts Point Park in the total amount of ten thousand dollars. Authorizing future budget amendments for, uh, fiscal year, uh, twenty-twenty-one budget. And authorizing the city manager to sign all documents associated with said contract documents.
So this one, um, I'll do the lead-in on it. So, uh, with the absence of Fourth of July fireworks, the idea was floated to me by a couple of, of good citizen and council members that, you know, they would like to entertain the idea of a possible, you know, very scaled down, probably like a third or, yeah, probably a third of the size of the July fourth fireworks that we usually do, um, for New Year's. So that's before you right now. It would be a completely funded through donations, so it would not be city funding. The city would provide, of course, our emergency management services, police, fire, EMS. And we, we would discuss a way to do it like in cars. Or, you know, so that it's not just a crowd of people walking around. So you either watch from your home, or we could set up the, the trailer parking lot in the, in the marina, and you do a stay in your car, uh, type, uh, event.
And so we just throw firecrackers in the car?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Actually, just, uh,
Shoot roman candles underneath everyone's gas. Bruce, you wanna jump in and?
Well, I was just gonna question here. It says that the city council is considering a five thousand dollar match, but from my understanding.
Where was that?
It says right in the background.
What? Where did that come from?
That's what I said. So I, I think, from my understanding.
The match come from?
It, it doesn't matter, because.
No, there was no match.
Well, that's fine, because I was about to say, the, from my understanding, um, I mentioned the idea to Beth, and Beth ran with it. And due to her strong arm tactics and, and, and Lady Charm was able to get most of the money for this. And then, uh, we were gonna kick in some money as well. Should be enough to pay for the whole show. So that was the plan.
Good show.
Yeah, so basically, I think the people along the, along the harbor and, um, I said, uh, just because I want to see some fireworks this year, get rid of twenty-twenty with a bang, um, I decided to, uh, kick in some money, so.
But they're just so good on your boat, right? It's gonna be similar to Fourth of July, where if you want to get out there in your boat, you can, can, right?
Yeah, we have to coordinate with the, um, we, we always coordinate with the U.S. Coast Guard, and they do have a little perimeter that they set up, so you can't just come right underneath, because the shells are angled where they shoot out over the first couple hundred feet of water, you know, they're kind of slight angle. And the Coast Guard kinda patrols that little corridor right out there, but you could be elsewhere.
And if there's a north wind, then you'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Uh, one thing, we do have a question, and, uh, Beth kinda asked me this, and I had the same. Since we are kind of running this through the city, when would you like that money other than tomorrow?
Uh, it, I mean, we got a little time. We'll, we'll put Stephanie on it. Um, we've already contacted the pyrotechnist, uh, guy. He's available.
Sure.
So we would, you know, I, I, I think, you know, after the, the, after the Thanksgiving holidays.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea, and thank you, Bruce and Be- Beth for stepping up and doing this. I think it'll help everybody's spirit.
Uh, it's kind of what we thought as well.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I think, uh, in reaching out to the local businesses here, it didn't take long for us to raise ten thousand dollars, which just shows, like, I think everyone in our community, we need a little sparkly, and especially in two, uh, twenty-twenty, and, uh, I'll make sure that the businesses that are stepping up to donate the money, that they get recognized.
Right. Right, thank you.
Good job, Beth.
No, it's, it's all of us.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Councilmember Salamine?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes. U is a resolution. Authorizing the purchase of one twenty-twenty F-four-fifty four-by-four medics ambulance for the EMS department from Southwest Ambulance Sales.
Darla here? Oh, there she is.
GAC for a total amount of two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ten dollars to replace unit three-two-two. Declaring unit three-two-two as surplus and authorizing the trade-in of this unit to Southwest Ambulance Services. Accepting the used vehicle allowance in the amount of five thousand dollars. Authorizing city manager to act as the executive officer and authorize representative of the city in all matters pertaining to said purchase.
Darla, didn't you want to kill the, uh, trade-in thing?
I was about to say, that, that is a terrible, terrible value for a car that's seven years and under a hundred miles.
We, we've already discussed it. We're, and Darla can jump in on it.
Yeah, I think we can definitely auction for more. I would still recommend declaring it a surplus, but we, we would prefer to go and try to auction that unit.
Yeah, it's gotta be at least worth double that. Okay, well, I make a motion to approve and removing the trade-in, but declaring the unit three-two-two a surplus.
Second.
All the row.
Councilmember Salamine?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
Member Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
And, and also, Ed, Ed and the guys came up with a really cool color scheme for this one. It's blue, blue and, um, different tech, you know, normal tax, not the Gothic.
Thank you.
It's attached, uh, if you, if you scroll down, there should be an attachment there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, scroll.
I don't think I got the attachment.
No, I didn't. Trust me, I was looking for it.
I did not see it in here either.
Uh, we didn't have time. There it is, right there.
Oh.
I think it looks very cool. What do you guys think?
Oh, yeah.
Marlin, EMS emblem.
There you go.
Scroll down a few, scroll down one more, and you'll get the, uh, we did a mock-up. Zoom out a little.
There's the mock-up, very cool.
Oh, I like the Marlin pride.
Love that. I love that. That's way better.
Will you change them all to look like that?
We are getting, uh, bids on, on a repaint on the red one, so we've had one bid come in already for fifteen thousand to repaint it the same color with the updated graphics, um, but we're still getting bids on that.
You're awesome, Ed. Thank you.
Mayor, you like that one?
Beautiful.
Yeah, very cool.
Awesome.
Yeah, and we have, uh, our second all-iss unit is three-thirty-three. That'll, that's, that's reaching the end of its life as well, and so wouldn't take long. We can get all three matching. Be, uh, be pretty nice.
Yeah. Good work. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you guys very much.
You too.
Item V, Mayor.
Hmm. Resolution authorizing the purchase of one twenty-twenty-one Ford F-five-fifty Metro F, uh, five-eight super cam brush truck for the volunteer fire department from Chastain Ford through HGAC in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. Funds from, uh, twenty-twenty-one general fund account zero-five capital outlay account six-oh-three-zero-zero, and authorizing the, the city manager to act as the executive officer and authorize representative of the city in all matters related to said.
Darla?
Yeah. Yes, this is budgeted. It was budgeted at a hundred-and-ninety thousand. So we need about six-hundred-and-thirty-two more dollars, but the assistant chief's truck is coming in a little under fifty, so we definitely have the money. This is, I believe it's exactly like the other brush truck that was purchased last year.
Yeah.
And when we did this through HGAC, so it did not require a sealed bid. I think it'll still take four to five months to be built, but we are paying cash for this one.
Sorry, we are, are not.
We are paying cash for this. The ambulance is coming to you with financing, um, for it.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
All the row.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Salamine?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
Item W.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item W. Authorizing the purchase of two twenty-twenty Ford F-one-fifty crew cab four-by-four trucks for the police department, uh, department from, uh, Salisbury Ford.
Kathy Holt?
Join the meeting.
Through goodbye cooperative in the amount of eighty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. Funding from the twenty-twenty-one budget capital outlay count number zero-five-zero. General fund capital outlay account number five-nine-three-four-oh in the amount of eighty-thousand-sixty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Authorized fees and other related, uh, and other related options and the, and authorizing the manager, city manager, to act as the executive officer or officer and authorize representative of the city in all matters pertaining to said purchase.
Darla?
I think she got.
No, she's here.
Chief's here, I believe, but these are in his normal rotation, and they are budgeted.
I, uh,
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All row.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Salamine?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item X. Authorizes the purchase of a radio system equipment from Daly Wells Communications for the, of the police department. Radio system upgrade in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Funding from the general fund oh-five-oh uh, police department capital outlay account five-nine-three-zero-zero, and authorizes the city manager to act as the executive officer and authorize representative of the city all matters pertaining to said purchase. My question on this one is, have we not done this before? I've seen this radio equipment request before.
I got a better question for you, but, but yes, we, we did, and it said that they did not purchase it. Is that correct?
Okay.
Yeah, Darla, you wanna give the history on this one?
Yes, and I think if Chief can give better history than me, actually, but we did have this budgeted, and we talked about, um, doing this piecemeal for like the next three years. We were not able to purchase the portion last year due to COVID and everything that happened. So we placed the entire amount, um, in this year's budget. I believe the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand plus the one-twenty-five from last year, so right now, he's only asking for one-sixty-nine, but I would anticipate he's gonna have more coming down the pike, um, shortly.
This is only part one.
Sure. I got a question for Chief. Since it's been a year, have we rebid this or re-quoted, just since the prices have gone down?
Yes, Stokes, uh, LT re- re-quoted everything.
Okay.
Yeah. He did that for the budget this summer.
Okay. I'll say, because usually stuff will sometimes goes down just as technology matures and whatnot.
Sometimes goes up.
Does go up, absolutely. Motion to approve.
Second.
All the row.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
Councilmember Salamine?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Mayor B. Young?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item eleven is the city manager's report. An update on general, and general discussion on the eighty-seventh legislative session. This is very important.
Okay, so, so, you know, the Texas legislature meets every two years. The last two sessions, we've been on, kind of on the offensive. Twenty-seventeen, we had the Hotel Motel Conference Center legis, getting on the, I, I forget what the code was, but getting the city's name mentioned into the, into the Hotel Motel Conference rebate, uh, state law, so that was a heavy lift. And then in twenty-nineteen, we went after the eight million dollars that the GLO, uh, unfunded us, and we had to go after the legislature for that. And if you recall, the, the governor stepped in with the four million, and then Todd Hunter and Senator Colcorus came through with the other four million through the legislature, through a rider. So that was a heavy lift in twenty-nineteen. This year, the upcoming session, we see it more as a, so that was offensive back in, you know, we were on the offense. This session, we're looking at more kind of on the defense. We don't have a big lift at this moment. But typically, what will come up is things that, uh, ordinance or laws that typically come after kind of city regulatory rights. And, and so we partner up with TML. Um, TML sends us a lot of big updates on, you know, throughout the session. The session doesn't start until January, so we're a couple of months away. So nothing's, nothing's in stone at this point. Um, people are jockeying for position. They don't even know who the Speaker of the House is yet, so that's a big one to come up. And, and because that, that in turn appoints people to all the different positions, which we hope our leadership, uh, at the state level can get in some good, good positions this go-around, uh, which only supports the city. The, the only thing we're seeing right now is, we did have a letter come to the, come to the mayor's attention about a week and a half ago, and it was the mayor's, and, and it came to us very late, because they were gonna put this letter out for publication. And it was in regards to, um, the legislation that the port is entertaining. So they had caught wind that the port, one of the ideas of the port is, uh, changes to chapter fifty-sixteen. So we received a letter to ask the mayor to get in and sign this letter of support. However, after conferring with our attorneys, the, our attorney said, hey, this is something that needs to go to council. You know, the mayor is, you know, it's, it's, it's safer for the mayor not to sign this, and this should go to council. And, and so that's where, we're, we're bringing it to you guys, but it, it's it, it's not something we want to jump in right at the moment, because we don't even know what they're proposing. We don't know what the full body of this legislature, or the port, has not come to us. Um, we know it has to do with, uh, zoning and use allowances on their property, but we do not know at this point what their full legislative idea is, uh, in, in regards to what they're thinking of doing. The city is often, uh, and the citizens have often said, hey, we want non-heavy industrial uses on Harbor Island. That's something that's been thrown out for, for years. And so it's not something that we just want to. And so it's not something that we just want to dismiss. We want to see what it is that that they're proposing and what uses they're proposing and how it would be structured, how the permitting would work. We we want to, we, I think, I think you guys should look at it and see what what they're proposing before just running off and shouting no to the wind like a lot of people are demanding that we do. I think it's not very prudent that we at least take a look at alternative uses on Harbor Island. And the and the reason it's it's a legislative issue is because the port by law can only do heavy industrial. They can't, they do not have the power to to do like light commercial, like a marina or something like that, whatever, whatever it might be. They would have to go seek legislative approval through the legislation, get the laws changed to have them allowances to do other uses. Whether or not you guys, whether or not the city wants to support that, I I don't know at this point. It's too early in the game. We need to look at it. I need to bring it. I need to get hold of the legislation in detail. Bring it to you guys probably at December or even January. There's all, all the time in the world. We have months and months before we are forced to pick a side. You know, I don't think we need to wait too long, but we don't need to just jump on the no bandwagon right now. I think you guys need to look at this.
So is this, is this like, this sort of reading it's authorized projects? Any building, including facilities or improvements that PSC's land? Uh, sorry, to entertainment, tourist convention or public parks proposed and events, including auditoriums, amphitheaters, concert halls, parks and park facilities? So basically, this opens them up to maybe, I would be like a cruise ship terminal?
I don't know. We need, that's why we need to look at it. That that's my opinion. I think I think you guys need to look at it. I think it's, I think you guys should get more information. Figure out what it is, figure out what the impacts are.
Sure.
And.
Let's want to make sure it's not a, it's not a way for them to say, oh, yes, you get you get to regulate our building codes and then say, oh, we're exempt from building codes.
Right, that's and that's a possibility we got to look out for.
Sure.
If my understanding of of this legislation is that it's an attempt to take away the city's authority in regard to building and use on Harbor Island. That's my impression that I get. And it very well could be that. Yeah.
But it can't just be about Harbor Island if if all these other cities chimed in, right?
No, it's not. It's it's about all the.
Maybe they're trying to do it on all their stuff.
It is. It's it's governing all port property.
They want to stop Kevin. Sure, I get that.
Yeah. So what they want is free rein to do whatever they want to do. Quite possibly. But but I I do think it's worth you guys looking at. I don't think, I think it's you know, it here's the thing. If you jump up and down screaming, no heavy industry, no heavy industry, no heavy industry, what's the alternative? You know, are you, is there anything else on the table? You got to look at, they they got, they got to have some use, you know, so what's the, what's the preference of of the citizens? What's the preference of council to see? What do we want to see over there?
Maybe a big marina.
We know from the crowd that we don't want to see heavy industry, okay? So what's the alternative? I'm just asking. What's the alternative? It's going to be something.
Oh, that's, I I did see something about them doing a like a mega yacht proposal, mega yacht harbor for like big hundred foot or hundred fifty foot yachts.
Right, which 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 would be prohibited unless they have legislative changes.
Sure. And like I said, that's why I said, I don't know if this includes, like, say they want, I know that was kind of like floated a couple of years ago before all the heavy industry about doing some type of a cruise ship terminal. And, you know, we may have mixed feelings about that, but cruise ship terminal is probably a lot better than a VLCC terminal.
Right, so it's something you guys need to look at, I think.
So what?
Better than a VLCC terminal.
Yeah, so.
Well, David and I are going to take a trip up to Austin.
When are we doing that and do we need to maybe have council go up there and or is that just something y'all are going to do?
Well, we got, you know, I mean, it's good. It's it's going to be, you know, I don't know what our schedule is going to be. Usually it's usually it's a trip every two to three weeks during the legislative session, so it we we get quite busy. I I think we're going to be on our heels. I don't know from what, but there's, I I I'm guessing there's going to be a a lot of runs at municipal and not just from the port. I mean, this stuff, this, the the anti-city sentiment stuff, you know, reducing city powers, it 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 comes from from all over. We're going to see winds, we're going to be fighting windstorm again, you know, so what's that?
Yeah, SDR ordinance again.
Yeah, yeah, the short-term rental probably is going to come back, so it's going to be a, it's going to be a busy session. We're going to be and and typically, we, you know, quite often it's the mayor and I and we grab as many council members as we can get to go up.
Sure.
The chamber in in years past has sponsored a Port A Day. I'm not sure what that's one thing we don't know is we don't know what it's going to look like this session with COVID, you know, what is, you know, typically you go up there and you wander the halls and you go and knock on doors, you hand out pamphlets. You know, you try to get in and talk with, we we don't know what it's going to be like with COVID, January, February. We don't know what the allowances are going to be, you know, walking around the Capitol Halls.
Okay. When do you have a rough idea that we're going to be able to at least know the the contents or speculate on the contents of the?
I I we'll we'll have another legislative update at the December meeting and I'll try to definitely get to the nuts and bolts of this thing and what it is.
Sure.
Have we reached out to the CEO of the port after his comments that he made public without us being supportive and?
See what he means by?
I mean, I I talked to, I talked to Sean about a week and a half ago after this thing. And he he had come to me back in probably June or July and said, hey, if the city's not interested in heavy industry on Harbor Island, would you guys entertain alternative uses? And of course, I said, yes, the city council and the citizens would like to entertain it, would like to look at it. You know, see what you, what you're proposing, which has not been done yet. But that's something we want to look at. And so that's what Sean's referring to in his statement that the city has, does want to look at something. Everybody die out there?
No, we're just taking it in. It's a lot of information to think about and kind of heavy.
Yeah, a lot to digest. You got, I mean.
And of course, it is nine twenty. Somebody was asleep.
Yeah.
No, but it just, it's flip side is it it could maybe in some ways be a boon for us and maybe it's not good for maybe it's not good for Ringleside, but it's a, it's good for Port Aransas. Or the flip side is it may be bad for all of us. We just don't know. And so it's, you know, do we sell Peter to pay Paul or?
Well, we haven't seen anything yet.
Yeah, that's the thing is we just don't know.
Yeah, we need, you guys need more, more details, more information. So. But if you're interested in entertaining something else than heavy industry, then you know, you you got work to do with the port.
Well, I mean, I said, if it's something that's positive for us, then I definitely would be happy to talk to him, work with him.
You know, because because the the thought of it just being grass and flowers.
No, I.
I don't think there's a whole lot of reality.
But also flip side is if it's, if they wait for the port circumvent all of the stuff, the agreements that we did, then we got a lot of work for us in front of us as well because we got to bite them tooth and nail.
Absolutely.
So. So I, yeah, it's.
Wait, you see.
Go ahead. If what I'm hearing is correct, and since we don't have it in front of us, the goal, if they do go to legislation, would be to undo everything that we've done so far. So it depends, I suppose, on what they're proposing.
Right.
Well, he said, the thing is, like, say, if they want to build a cruise ship terminal under the current legislation, they can't unless they get it passed. But flip side is they could say, yeah, we're going to build a cruise terminal. We, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then turn around and say, oh, we changed our mind, we're going to go back in VLCC. And then we don't have any control over that either. So we even if it's a yes, or they come up with, you know, we're going to do something wonderful there, we still have to keep after, make sure they don't change their mind halfway through. That makes sense.
I think you're saying they're not really trustworthy, so.
I mean, you know, it's trust as far as I can go.
Okay.
Do you know who proposed this to the legislature?
I I do not.
Okay, Porter-Carpes-Christie.
Yes, but according to David, John Strawberry approached him, what, summer?
Yeah, it was summer.
Summer about a alternative use for the property, but some of the alternative uses are not currently allowed by the port, so this might be a option for them to legally open up and do something else, maybe a cruise ship terminal or maybe, you know, some type of small business, not small business, some business park.
Or VLCCs.
It depends on how they bury information in the bill, so shall we see it?
Yeah, we we just, we just need to wait and see what information we can get and then we'll make our call, right?
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, the ship has not sailed.
Yeah, no.
No.
We didn't say one thing either direction, so I think we've got time to make our stand.
We've committed nothing.
Yep, but I'm going to keep my cannon aimed on the ship as it sails.
That's all I have.
Well, that's definitely something to keep on her ra, on the radar.
Staff reports. Darla. Darla, accounting, finance?
Yes, so you have your month of October report for all of the funds. But I went ahead on your economic indicators since I did not get September to you guys. I went ahead and gave you October and September so you could kind of see how we finished out the fiscal year. So first I'll talk about how we finished out October. Our hotel motel was up nine point six two percent for the year last year. Our sales tax, though, for the same corresponding time was down a little bit over eleven percent. But that's how we finished out the fiscal year that we just ended, since I didn't get you that information. For October, though, we were blowing and going. The October hotel motel tax is for the rooms that were actually rented in September. We were a hundred and thirty-nine percent up over last year. And we did check those papers the reports everybody filed and they have been balanced, so. And the sales tax for the same corresponding year was at thirty-three and a half percent. So.
We had some big weekends.
Good number to start off.
In weekdays, I felt like in September, people were still here.
It was, it was, it was good, good weather and and, yeah, absolutely.
And people just weren't, not everybody was back in face-to-face school. And so a lot of people were here during the week in September. So if you have any questions?
Darla, how about Chief?
Thanks, Darla.
Thanks, Darla.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think he's having some audio.
Chief is having IT issues, Mayor.
He's.
How about EMS? Ed!
Okay, I know there's a lot of concern with the uptick in COVID nationally. But our call volume's been steady over the last month. We haven't really seen anything, anything coming in as far as volume wise, but over the next three months, of course, we expect the winter Texans start to really fill in. We always do have an uptick respiratory calls and stuff, so our PPE inventory is good, so our guys will be protected and we're getting regular updates from the health department. And of course, we pass all 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 positive COVID cases along to dispatch and get those addresses flagged. So we're good there. We did bring on three part-time staff members, getting them oriented oriented and going. Really, that's to, we have, we have other part-time staff that just have moved away or no longer available, so they're there to fill our, fill our whole, our scheduling needs. Other than that, I guess the biggest thing is that we, as you know, we were in two units, we're back down to one. And the temporary station we have now, we we will be, have to move out by May of next year. So we're working with the the man, city manager and finance to put together and and look for new, a new temporary facility slash housing. So that's all I got.
Yeah, that RP goes out Monday.
Monday, okay.
Thank you, Ed.
Yes, sir.
What are the requirements?
It's it's in our, it's, it's, you know, I think four bedrooms, kitchen, bathrooms, parking for three plus on-street parking. It's got some other stuff, R two and above.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's kind of the basics.
Sure.
Okay.
Paper.
Yeah, we'll get stuff in the paper. We'll do, Dan will do article. All right, the minutes from the City Committee Planning and Zoning Commission.
Those were not provided.
Are they in the package? No, Mayor, they were not. Okay, I I would be interested in having their minutes every month to look at. Okay. All right. Any city council comments? I have I I believe I mentioned to you there were two hundred and fourteen new cases of COVID in Nuasis County. Here in Port Aransas, we've had six, five hundred and sixty cases since the beginning of this thing. So that just gives you an idea of where this.
You're saying one in six people of Port Aransas have had COVID?
Five hundred and sixty cases since it began, yes.
It sounds, I mean, I'm not, I don't know that many people, wow.
Yeah.
And it's all. That comes from Anetta Rodriguez, County Health.
This, yeah, the good news is the school has had tremendous success and there hasn't been any really outbreaks at all with the children, which is awesome. So kudos to to what other schools doing to keep everybody safe and the staff is staying healthy, so I think that's I think that's good. I did hear today, Mayor, I don't know if you've heard that, but there was an article in the Caller Times that Peter Zanoni said that Quirkish Christie would be getting some of the Pfizer vaccine in December.
Yes, I read that.
Maybe we can get some.
Yeah, maybe we can get some.
That's about twelve people a week. In the meantime, people need to continue to wear masks. And I'll tell you the truth, I'm getting a little perturbed at some of our businesses around here not requiring mask. Get all kinds of emails every day about a business that's not doing it. You know, they're going to have to do their part to help us get through this pandemic.
Well, I hope everybody's going to be very careful during the holidays, okay, everywhere you're traveling and whatever you're doing, be really, really careful.
Absolutely.
But have a good holiday, if you can.
If you can. All right. That's about it, isn't it?
That's it.
Well, let's adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Is December's meeting the same, well, it's December.